Yes, good morning, Mayor. Hardisty?
Here.
Yu Daily?
Here.
Fritz?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here. Under Portland City Code and state law, the City Council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city has made several avenues available for them to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, eGovPDX, wwwportlandoregon.gov/video, and Channel 30. The public can also provide written testimony to the council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@PortlandOregon.gov. And when you email her, please let her know she cannot retire. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all for your patience, flexibility, and understanding, as we managed through this difficult situation to do the city's business, and thank you, Carla, for agreeing not to retire. First up, oh, wait, no, we have to hear from legal counsel. How could I deprive them of that opportunity? Lindley, are you reading today?
I am, and you would deprive me of my morning joy, so let me get started.
You bet.
To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at PortlandOregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the City Council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist. If you are representing an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected from the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And first up after that, Lindley is Communications. Carla, if you could first call the first person, please, for Communications this morning.
Yes, item 586, request of John S. Captain III to address council regarding Freedom of Information Act requests.
Hello.
Good morning.
How are you? Thank you for having me talk. I had made several applications in the FOIA request system for the Portland Police Bureau, and it was extremely difficult to get the items I was requesting that all had to do with the murder at Blue Lake Park. Now, what the thing was is that they would actually say that you can have them for a period of time, which I could understand for a portion for investigative purposes. But after like four, five, six years, and then later they come and say that it's expired, and I'm not able to look at it because it's too late. So I would recommend that the commissioners look into this and ask them, why wouldn't it toll beginning when it's available for the number of years that, you know, that you guys see appropriate? For me, the police reports that were written that I did finally get, all were containing lies, and there's no mechanism really to correct that. And the officers that write the lies are trying to build a false narrative in terms of the Tiffany Jenks murder. The fact that the police are able to lie in police reports and still get their purse and savings is beyond me. And regardless of Joanne Hardisty or you being in charge of the police bureau, they're highly corrupt, and it involves the courts as well. And the sad part about that is, is that lives get ruined. And as a Native American, especially, at the end of the Trail of Tears was a promise, a promise of justice. And when you're dealing with a murder, I shouldn't have to ask three or four times. In addition, they were able to send the mental health evaluators to me to find out if I was mental, and they came here, you know, with guns and whatever they have, guns and police cars and health advisors. And they asked if I had health insurance. I said, that's weird. I used to have it till Obamacare came, but why are you asking me that when I'm trying to ask you why you're not telling the truth in this murder case? So multiple police reports were written, they're containing lies, and I don't know how to fix that. So if you're going to kick the feds out, we can get some free labor, and maybe they could help in the three-state murder where the girl that murdered Tiffany got out in 11 days. And I have to believe that if it was three black men in that car, there's no chance in heck that they would be out of jail in 11 days, period. In addition to that, the police claimed that Tiffany had left bags at my Montevilla home. If they did leave bags, if she did leave bags here like they claimed, why didn't they get a warrant? It was actually a lie. She didn't leave any bags here. But when they're able to do what they want, it's really dangerous for the public, because her killers are still on the street, no matter what anybody says. Yes, the shooter's in jail, but the killers are on the street. So I just, that's my request, is that the FOIA request system doesn't work well for people who are set up, and I don't know how to fix that. And Joanne Hardisty, I love your comments about rocks, and thank you very much, both of you. And sorry about your mother passing away. Mine did too. And during that time, she was breathing through an oxygen tube, and the police were lying. So it was a very difficult time.
Thank you, John, for your testimony. I appreciate it, and it absolutely warrants looking into, and I appreciate your giving a seven for me.
Thank you both.
And thank you for your kindness. Appreciate it. Carla?
Next item is 587, request of John Carter to address council regarding Portland's economic recovery.
Good morning, John.
Good morning. I was recently rereading Commissioner Yu Daily's Reading Frenzy Closure letter from when she first joined the council in 2017. How opening such an establishment would be nearly impossible in today's Portland. And I think of all the people of color facing systemic oppression for which that opportunity would have been impossible even then. And I keep thinking to today, where white supremacy echoes and capital supremacy reigns, it's easy to see how policing falls into the economic plan, because the financialized corporate investment demands increased police support to protect and guard its capital assets, ones that are disconnected from community ownership. We can see this trend here in Portland as the police budget has ballooned while the city's economy has become increasingly financialized and disconnected from community equity. I saw the same process unfold at warp speed while living in New York City. Increased investment in policing, decreased investment in community, followed by waves of corporate cash, transforming the city into something hardly recognizable. Portland's communities, stories across the spectrum, a fabric torn first by white supremacy, then by capital supremacy. Even as we face an awakening and correction of historical injustice, the bar continues to be risen for all but concentrated wealth. Why does the city continue to invest in police and disinvest in the community? Why is it that police budgets increase but park budgets decrease? Why are opportunities created for large investment firms but blocked from the direct community on the ground? What conditions are we creating? Coronavirus has crippled the conditions even further. So I ask you, what is your vision as a council for a truly equitable bottoms-up recovery? Is it even possible? Is it even something you want when it's easier to just keep turning and tuning into the trend? Each morning, wake up and think, please, how do we help the people for which opportunity is set to be out of reach? How do we correct these conditions, the conditions of capital supremacy, the conditions set by white supremacy? Thank you.
Thank you, John. We appreciate your being here this morning. Thanks for hanging with us during some technical, difficult technical situations. Thank you very much. Carla, our third individual, please.
Item 588, request of Travis Athugees to address council regarding racist signs posted on public property in the Irvington area. Travis contacted us. He has canceled his communications.
All right, I'm sorry, because I actually wanted to hear about that. Thank you. Does that complete communications?
Yes, Mayor, that's all who signed up.
All right. Has any item been pulled off of the consent agenda, Carla?
Yes, we had a request from Commissioner Hardisty's office to pull 593.
593 is pulled. Let's see, that's garages. Okeydoke. Then with that, let's move into our, we can't quite get there, so let's go to a second reading, please.
Are we going to vote on the other consent items now?
Good point, Commissioner Hardisty. Thank you for reminding me. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty?
Aye.
Yu Daily?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. Carla, can we move to item 596? We're a little bit early for our first time cert.
596, accept and appropriate $128,401,261 in 2020 coronavirus aid relief and Economic Security Act funds and authority to the program bureau directors to execute contracts and agreements funded under the program.
Colleagues, we had a lengthy presentation and extensive public testimony on this item last week. This is the second reading. There's already further business on it before we call the roll. Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty?
I think I made my statements last week about why I find it necessary for me not to support the proposal that we are voting on at the moment. I want to be clear. In my mind, we have people that are in desperate Native resources, and I don't believe we did the best job we could of making sure that people would benefit from these limited dollars that we have. So with sadness, I cast my vote as no.
Yu Daily?
I am also having some technical difficulties at home. And I'm going to keep my remarks very brief. I just want to thank the numerous people and organizations that participated in the conversations about our relief and recovery. I think we've come to a reasonable agreement on the allocation. We do not have sufficient funds to help everyone. But I want to point out that 55% of our workers are employed by small businesses. And that, while you might not consider relief to a business's direct support, it is that person's livelihood, and we have thousands of small business owners who are on the verge of losing their businesses, losing their livelihood, losing their homes. So I would just argue that it's a wise investment to try to help people avert financial catastrophe, whether they are small business owners or individual workers. The bottom line is, we need the state and feds to step up and do more. And in the meantime, we have to invest our scant dollars in the smartest way possible. So I'm happy to support this. I want to thank the PDX CARES Task Force, Director Kimberly Branham, Director Callahan, Director Durbin, Director Myers, Tom Reinhardt, Dr. Marquesha Smith, and Director Chris Warner, and finally Marshall Runkel, who represented my office during these important discussions. I vote aye.
Fritz?
Well, first, thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily, for listing all of the staff that were involved, and I thank Tim Krail and my office for participating, as well as Dr. Marquesha Smith. I'm also grateful that some more of Oregon's tax dollars are coming back from the federal government. I don't, and I thank you, thanks to the congressional delegation and the leadership of the House Democrats for pushing for this. I don't know that they've decided how they're going to make up the difference, but perhaps they could cut the defense budget and eliminate the Departments of Home and Security. In the meantime, it's good that we've got these dollars coming back to Oregon, and I particularly appreciate that we are doing the right thing and sending some of them to our partners in East County to make sure that they are helped as well. More particularly, we've been very careful to center Black, Indigenous, and people of color as we make these decisions. And as we continue to navigate these uncertain times, it's imperative we do not return to business as usual. The distribution of CARES Act funding gives us the opportunity to implement a new model that values the lived experience and expertise of Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our Portland community. This new model understands that while it is important to nurture existing partnerships in the city, it is also crucially important to find a path forward that creates new partnerships with culturally specific, community-based organizations that do not currently have a connection with the city. To that end, we are committed to providing grant funding in new and innovative ways. And again, thank you to the leadership group who were very centered on community. And thanks also to Dr. Smith and the Portland Housing Bureau's information from the project proposal for their helping in getting me to understand how they are continuously, excuse me, improving the process and the criteria. Their rent assistance and household assistance are using the following mission. Create an emergency rent assistance, household assistance intervention to support BIPOC households financially impacted by COVID-19, to prevent them from being evicted and falling into homelessness, and to support the culturally specific organizations to effectively serve BIPOC communities. And the guiding principles from the COVID Equity Toolkit, which the council adopted, are the foundation of the process and have been. And the intention for both Rental and Household Assistance Fund is to provide, is to support providers and networks that have rent assistance infrastructure and demonstrated outcomes in providing rent assistance and affordable housing to low-income BIPOC households, as well as culturally specific providers serving BIPOC communities who are not included in the networks, but who directly serve BIPOC households in need of rent assistance and household support. So I'm pleased that a lot of the money is being dedicated to that. I'm also grateful that we are dedicating money to help bridge the digital divide. Now more than ever, we all understand how crucial technology is, as we're finding out this morning with some of our technical glitches and have been. So, you know, we are challenged by the technology we have that sometimes doesn't work. A lot of people just don't have the technology and are at a severe disadvantage. I'm also grateful that we're investing money in the Portland Five. I know Commissioner Fish would be very appreciative of that particular allocation. And thank you, Mayor Wheeler, for your leadership in this. It's been a process. We won't always all agree on things with a dismountitude, and I'm grateful that the discussions have happened in a constructive and collaborative manner. Aye.
Wheeler?
Well, thank you very much. And I want to thank all the people that Commissioner Yu Daily had also thanked. I want to thank Sonya Shemansky on my team, as well as Sam Diaz, who worked very hard. I want to thank all of our collaborative community partners who worked on this. This was really an extensive process with tremendous community outreach. And as Commissioner Fritz mentioned, we emphasize BIPOC communities throughout the planning process and ultimately through the allocation that we settled on. The vast majority of the resources goes directly to households and small business support. And has been noted, households are really struggling right now. And I'm very proud of the fact that days after we declared a COVID emergency in the city of Portland, we began sending resources directly to households, both for rent support as well as key household expenditures. We have doubled down on that through the direction of a significant portion of our COVID funds to that same type of support. In addition to that, small businesses remain the best long-term economic prosperity generator in this city, and it's critical that we get them through this phase of the COVID crisis. We have also worked very hard to make sure that Multnomah County can actually meet the standards that are required under Phase One of the governor's reopening guidelines. That was a $20 million allocation to Multnomah County directly to make sure that we're addressing the immediate public health consequences of COVID, as well as meeting those Phase One criteria. I saw that is absolutely essential. And as Commissioner Fritz mentioned, we have sent a allocation to our East Multnomah County cities so that they could also do the work they need to do around public health to meet the Phase One reopening requirements. And since the state chose not to fund those East County jurisdictions directly, I believe that left us with a moral obligation, as well as a practical obligation, to support those cities in their efforts, and I'm glad that we're doing that. I also want to make note of the fact, as others have mentioned, the funds we have here are not sufficient. We are not solving the problems. This is truly emergency support that will get us through this phase of the COVID crisis, but this can't be the end. And I'm glad that our city bureaus are now working closely in alignment and trying to figure out how they can leverage resources. We're leveraging economic prosperity and business support through Prosper Portland. The Housing Bureau has been significantly engaged in allocating resources towards rent support and housing support. There's a significant level of support going to the Joint Office of Homeless Services to make sure that the most vulnerable people on our streets get the resources they need. We had a spirited discussion about the question as to whether or not funding should go towards the digital divide. I think it's essential that we fund the digital divide, given the reality that right now, in order to gain access to either educational or economic opportunities in this COVID crisis, you must have access to digital tools, like the one that we're using to conduct our democratic process here at Portland City Hall. And I think about the children in the public schools who are being told that they probably will not come back to school, or at least won't come back to school fully in the fall. That means any young people who do not have access to those digital tools will not have access to their core educational opportunities. And so I think it was critically important that we supported the digital divide efforts. And last but not least, the arts venues are important, not only because arts will help see us through this crisis, and it's important for the social fabric of this community and the psychological fabric of this community, but there's pragmatic reasons to do it, too. If we don't support, for example, the Portland Five, that contract comes back to us. We own those facilities. Metro manages them on our behalf. And if we don't support them, there's no reason why Metro would continue to agree to operate those facilities on behalf of the city of Portland. So I think that's a good pragmatic decision that we made there. It was not a substantial outlay. It's a relatively small thing in the overall package, but I think it was critically important. And the next step for us is, since we all acknowledge that this level of funding in and of itself is not sufficient, is collective advocacy to our state and to our federal governments for both legislative and financial support for renters and for others who are struggling economically during this crisis. There is an opportunity for all of us on the Portland City Council to come together and help push for and lead that advocacy, and I look forward to doing that collectively as a unified team. Proud to vote aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on that. We will go back to our first time cert, Carla. Time cert number 589, please.
Authorize grant agreement with CASA of Oregon for the Oregon Worker Relief Fund in amount of $250,000.
Commissioner Yu Daily, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. This contract approves the $250,000 from Civic Life's fiscal year 1920 budget for the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. Civic Life proposed directing its cost savings, oh, I'm going to move on. Sorry. A little discombobulated this morning. Colleagues, you'll recall that during the spring bump, Civic Life proposed reallocating $250,000 from its budget to the Oregon Workers Relief Fund, an assistance program designed by community to provide financial relief to Oregonians who can't access established unemployment assistance systems, namely undocumented Oregonians. Today, we have Andrea Williams from Civic Life to present the contract that will award city funds to the Oregon Workers Relief Fund. Welcome, Andrea.
Wording council, can you hear me okay? Excellent.
Loud and clear. You're good.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners Yu Daily, Fritz, and Hardisty. I'm Andrea Williams, Partnerships Manager for the Office of Community and Civic Life. I'm going to provide a little bit of background on the ordinance, and then I'm actually joined by a representative of the Oregon Worker Relief Fund, Ricardo Lujan Valerio, who is the Policy Director of Latino Network, and he's going to provide more presentation about the fund itself. So as Commissioner Yu Daily just said, this ordinance authorizes a grant agreement with CASA of Oregon for the Oregon Worker Relief Fund in the amount of $250,000. CASA of Oregon serves as the fiscal sponsor of the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. During the spring budget monitoring process, City Council unanimously approved reallocating $250,000 from the Office of Community and Civic Life's fiscal year 1920 budget to the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. Contributing city resources to this fund has been a recommendation from several groups, including the Undocumented Portlanders Work Group of the Portland COVID-19 Economic Impact and Intervention Task Force, which was convened by Prosper Portland, in addition to the New Portlanders Policy Commission, who presented to council on June 24th, along with various community organizations that our bureau partners with through our diversity and civic leadership and immigrant and refugee programs. And I would just like to add that I think these recommendations come for very good reason. Some information for council, the city of Portland is home to over 86,000 immigrant residents, making up about 13.5% of the city's population. And this is according to research done by the New American Economy, which uses 2018 American survey, a community survey data. And notably, over 20,000 immigrant Portlanders, or nearly a quarter of the city's immigrant population, could face extreme hardship if they lose their jobs because they are ineligible for unemployment benefits and have been excluded from federal economic relief to their citizenship status. And yet, at the same time, immigrant Portlanders experience a disproportionate amount of exposure to COVID-19 and its economic and health impacts. According to this research done by the New American Economy, immigrant Portlanders are working in frontline and essential industries during this crisis. They represent 21% of the workforce in the restaurant and food service industry, 20% in transportation warehousing, 16% in grocery stores and supermarkets, and a little, just about 15% in the healthcare industry. So with this grant, the city will join the state of Oregon and Oregon Philanthropic Foundations, in addition to dozens of community-based organizations in contributing to the Oregon Worker Relief Fund. And I would now like to invite, share more details about the fund itself.
Wonderful. Thank you, Andrea. Good morning, Mayor Wheeler, members of the council. For the record, my name is Ricardo Lujan Valerio. I am the Director of Advocacy at Latino Network. And before I begin with my presentation, I do want to extend my thanks to Commissioner Udaley and the leadership at Civic Life, Suk and Andrea, for making this possible for our communities. I'll be very quick and brief in my presentation, but you'll see why this support is dire for our communities. So again, with the Oregon Worker Relief Fund, we're actually composed of multiple organizations. And we have an executive committee that leads the crucial aspects of the operation. You will see the representatives of that executive committee on the screen, and all of them range from organizations across the state. For Portland, most notably are Latino Network, Apoно, and then CASA as well, for some of the work that they do here in the city. Innovation Law Lab as well is a huge partner located in Portland that's been helping and is one of the essential partners when it comes to the software and infrastructure of the actual support to the individuals that we serve. But I want to give you all also just a little overview of what the Oregon Worker Relief Fund is in the first place. When COVID-19 first hit, we realized a high degree of advocacy happening at the state level, at the local level, on a multitude of public benefits for our communities. And at the same time, organizations like Pecun, CASA, and Latino Network were seeing very unique challenges to our communities, and specifically our immigrant communities. One area that we didn't really see a high degree of advocacy on and didn't really see a solution for was unemployment insurance for undocumented immigrants, or immigrants that are just ineligible for your traditional means tested benefits or unemployment insurance. And so that caused Latino Network, Pecun, and CASA to get together and try to create a new approach that would service this population, essentially with two drastic missions, right? The first one, our top priority being providing direct cash support and assistance to those that are in financial crisis because of COVID-19 and giving them disaster reliefs. And then the second one is building community power and building infrastructure within our communities so that our recovery in the long term because of COVID-19 can actually be maneuvered in an easier manner than potentially without this program. And so, again, the purpose is actually very wide. We also wanted to recognize the impact that immigrants have in our community, both in the local and the state level. One in 10 Oregon families have a child. And then immigrants contribute immensely to the economy by, through taxes. The workforce itself, again, as some of the numbers that Andrea stated in the city, there's very specific statistics on how impactful the immigrant community has been. And we've been working closely with the Oregon Center of Public Policy to truly get a huge picture statewide on how that impact has been instrumental to the response of COVID-19. The fact that undocumented immigrants pay over, I believe the $81 million figure was actually from 2017. It's now over that amount. That has a drastic impact to the way in which the state, the city, local governments responded to COVID-19. So the fact that many of our communities put into the system but are not able to benefit in times of need was a huge, huge concern for our organizations. So the need, there is an estimate of about 27,000 Portlanders that are UI ineligible and that won't be able to receive the traditional support on COVID-19. I do want to emphasize that that's, again, only the Portland number. The number that we estimate statewide is about 74,000 individuals that would be impacted by COVID-19 and their work abilities, and therefore financially impacted. And then, you know, we're seeing an influx of hundreds of organization, of individuals per week applying for this. At Latino Network alone, within the span of the past two weeks, we got over 400 applications coming into our organization to get some of this relief that we've been able to establish. Now, more than 87% of applicants have been waiting for five weeks in total to just get any kind of support. We ask a variety of questions when we do our navigations. One of them is, how long have you been unemployed? And a lot of them, the majority of them, have expressed that they've been unemployed for over five weeks. And that was the first time, our conversation with them was the first time that they've been able to get any, any hope and opportunity of relief, financial relief. Now, Oregon Worker Relief Fund has gotten $10 million out the door to immigrants. That means that we've been able to provide over 5,000 individuals and families with support that ranged from $1,200 to $1,720, which is the max that someone can receive in a one-time payment. We do calculations to try to support individuals on what would be worth a month's worth of support, but we do a one-time payment for that. And one of the wonderful parts about it, too, is that we're serving three major components of the community. Those that are banked, underbanked, and unbanked. A wonderful thing that we've been able to see, and this is to the point that Mayor Wheeler made earlier today, a digital divide, we've been able to empower about 29% of our community members to do digital payments through PayPal, which we've partnered with, to get money in the hands of our community without having to expose them physically to go into a bank and getting those payments. So we've been trying to be as innovative as possible during the time of COVID as well. It's also very important to realize who's been the most impacted in our community and the areas that they worked in. Food service being the highest, 37% of the folks that we've provided assistance to have been in the food service. The second one being agriculture, janitorial services, construction, childcare, and then others. But you can see a pretty drastic difference in disproportionality between the food service industry and other areas of the economy. I continue to say, and I said from the beginning, specifically for the food industry, the immigrant community and the undocumented immigrant community are not often just the employees of those organizations. They're the backbone. Without the kitchen staff, there is no restaurant. With a lot of the staff that support those businesses, there is no business. So that was a huge number and a huge impact, not just to our community, but to the state. We've had over 100 organizations support the Oregon Worker Relief Fund at a state level, at the local level. We've been also very fortunate to build a really strong system and coalitions ranging from BIPOC organizations to ally organizations that have truly made this a reality. But out of all these organizations, there have been significant players that are navigators that I'll get to in just a bit. I do want to run for you all a little bit of the updates on the funding. As I stated, we got $10 million from the emergency board at the state level. Those were state dollars, which allowed a lot of flexibility. On June 5th, we got an additional $20 million from the state, 10 of them to continue the work of the Oregon Worker Relief Fund, but the other 10 to do a new program called Quarantine Fund to provide specific support to agricultural workers that would face quarantine due to COVID-19 exposure. We've also been able to get funding from philanthropic partners and some individual donors. And we are also reflecting the $250,000 from the city of Portland here. So we're looking at a total of about $33 million to date of committed and actual investments that have been made to the fund. This is the infrastructure need that we've been building. As I stated to the, to council members, the mayor's office, and Civic Life, our duty from day number one was to provide 100% of the public dollars to the community for the first round of investments. And we were going to put the onus of funding infrastructure and operations on ourselves. So far, we've been successful in that. We haven't met our official goal of fundraising. So we still are about $400,000 shy of doing that. But we've been able to raise enough to actually make the operations feasible and workable. So we're very proud of that, and we'll continue to do that fundraising on our own as well. Just a quick snapshot that I wanted to show you all as well. As of July 7th, 2020, we have provided, again, about $10.5 million to individuals. And that's statewide. You'll see the map on the screen. The lighter blue are areas where we've been serving folks at a lighter rate. And when it gets darker, that's the higher density of applications we've been approving. But you'll see that this is truly a statewide operation and an operation that we intend to continue as best as we can, so long as the funds are available. And then, again, these are the 20 organizations that are providing specific navigations to individuals out in the community. I want to thank every single one of them for stepping up to the plate in such a difficult time. Just for the council's knowledge, we've been able to turn out these $10.5 million within the span of three months. And we were able to get infrastructure up and running within one month and a half. Again, big shout out to Innovation Law Lab for being able to provide a lot of that software infrastructure and the legal processes. But you'll see the five-step process in which a navigator goes through. The first one is that a community member, again, seeks the assistance from one of these participating CBOs. The CBO navigator assists them in filling out the CBO facing application. And it's about a 35-minute process once they're able to get a hold of a navigator. Once it's filled out, it goes through our clearinghouse. It's a single system approval process that is reviewed by attorneys as well at the end of the day. Once the review process is approved, the Oregon Worker Relief Fund Coalition refused that final approval to make sure that there's no discrepancies, that we're actually meeting our mission and serving the people correctly. And then approved the applications, then the individuals get the money, either, again, through electronic means, or if necessary, through checks. And we mail those out. And so what's next? Again, I mentioned the $20 million that we received. We intend to start those operations fairly soon. And so, once we get those operations up and running, we'll be able to continue to support as many folks as we can. Hopefully, we'll be able to break that 10% service of the 74,000 statewide that I mentioned. But in Portland, we've been, out of the $10.5 million, we were able to serve about 22% of Portlanders. That's not enough. As I mentioned, the need here locally is about 27,000, and we were only able to serve statewide a little bit north of 5,000. So that is all I have for the council. I'm available for any questions, should you all have any.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricardo, for your great work and presentation. With that, we would like to invite council to ask any questions. Otherwise, that concludes our presentation.
Very good. Excellent. Thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you. Unfortunately, I got bumped off by the technology right towards the end of the presentation. So you may have answered this question. Could you just put the slide back up showing the distribution of where you've been funding people, please?
Is this the one you're talking about, Commissioner Fritz?
Yes, thank you. So, so I'm, obviously, the city of Portland's funding is a fraction of the total funding. I am wondering, how do we ensure that the city's dollars help employees within the city?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Fritz. That's a very good question. We've been able to build our internal infrastructure to really keep pace and track of every dollar that we receive to the dollar. And so, on the way in which we report back to the council and the expenditures of the $250,000, we'll be able to give you a direct number of how many Portlanders were served because of that investment and be able to ensure, again, that it's Portlanders that are being served by those dollars.
Great. Thank you very much. It's a great program. I appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. It raised a question for me. Of the people who can take advantage of this fund, do you know what percentage is unbanked? And what challenges they are having actually being able to access money that they're actually entitled to?
Yeah, Commissioner Hardesty, thank you. It's a pretty large amount. I don't have the percentage in front of me, but it's actually the majority of folks that have requested checks rather than electronic payments. A lot of that, again, is because our immigrant community usually does not have the technological accessibility that most folks have. And we've been trying to empower them as best as we can to be able to not just use this as a means to support them, but also to grow the capacity within the community. But the percentage is pretty high on the unbanked population. Our hope is that we continue to address that. We've actually partnered up with a few credit unions across the state to be able to waive any kind of processing fees when it comes to the withdrawal of cash on these checks. So, again, the operations are fairly new, and so we're trying to grow and evolve as best as we can and trying to address that specific issue, too.
Thank you, Ricardo. I would recommend that you keep really good data around that because it's not okay that people are going to have to spend a percentage of these limited resources to actually cash a check if they are not a banked individual. And so it would be really helpful as we start rebuilding coming out of this pandemic to really think about how we can use our clout to actually help unbanked people be able to access those resources. And I hope that we are able to identify some credit unions that we can hold up as models of folks that actually provide banking resources for everyone in our community, because almost no bank does. And so I'm grateful for your work, and thank you very much. Great presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, and we're actually, you know, as I mentioned, the 35-minute process actually is pretty thorough in the questions that we ask. And we're actually extremely excited to be able to show you all. Once we report back on the success of distributing the dollars, on the information we've been able to gather, it's pretty remarkable what we've been able to see, also very heartbreaking. And I think it will help guide a lot of the decisions moving forward for this community.
Good. Thank you. Are there any other questions, colleagues? Carla, do we have anybody signed up for public testimony?
No one signed up for this item, Mayor.
All right. Very good. This is an emergency ordinance. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udaley?
Since COVID began, this issue has been a priority for me. The Oregon Worker Relief Fund proposal estimated that 74,000 Oregonians are ineligible for employment insurance or federal stimulus because of their documentation status, despite paying into the system. I want to extend my appreciation to Latino Network, CASA, Pecun, and other organizations advocating for undocumented Oregonians throughout this crisis. As you heard earlier, and you heard in this presentation, we are coming up short in every arena with relief dollars. But this is an impressive start, which has helped stabilize thousands of Oregonians and their families. I feel it's very important that the city supports this fund and continues to prioritize immigrant and BIPOC communities throughout our COVID response. I want to thank Andrea Williams and Supri and Civic Life for identifying these dollars for the relief fund. The funds will provide stability to households that have been excluded from other forms of assistance, which is critically important to our COVID response and our recovery. I happily vote aye.
Fritz?
Thank you, Commissioner Udaley, for your steadfast support for undocumented people throughout your time on the council. And this is just the latest in a series of practical support to show those Portlanders that we do care about them, that they are part of our community, and we appreciate their contributions to our community. I'm very happy to vote. Thank you very much to all the community organizations. It's really great that so much of the work is being done right there in the community. Aye.
Wheeler?
I want to thank the Latino Network, Pecun, CASA, all of the people that we've heard from today. I thought this was a fantastic presentation. And I not only learned from it, but I think the public at large learned from it. It was a really good presentation. Commissioner Udaley, thank you for bringing this forward to our city council. It's support like this that we are giving to an important group of people in our community that makes me really proud to serve on this council with all of you. I'm really very proud. I'm really very pleased with this, and I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is approved. Thank you. Thanks, Arun. Next up, Carla, can you read items 590 and 591 together, please?
590, authorize contract with Lyft, Inc. to operate, procure, and install system components of a bike share system in an amount not to exceed $11,300,000. And 591, authorize agreement with Nike, Inc. to extend its sponsorship of Portland's bike share system.
Commissioner Udaley.
Thank you, Mayor. As Transportation Commissioner, I'm excited to announce the next five years of our Bike Town program. The proposal before council this morning provides several enhancements to our existing program. It expands the service area with Bike Town coming to parts of East Portland for the first time this September. It will increase the number of bikes in the program. It will replace our entire fleet with electric assist bikes. And it will continue and expand upon our equity programs, Bike Town for All, which is a low-income program, and Adaptive Bike Town, which serves people with disabilities. Nike's partnership and investment in Bike Town has been essential to the program's success. The reach of the Nike brand has introduced many new audiences to bike share and bicycling in general. And Nike's support enables us to provide this world-class system to Portland. So I want to thank Nike for its ongoing partnership with Bike Town. I'm going to turn it over to PBOT Director Chris Warner. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. For the record, Chris Warner, Director of the Portland Bureau of Transportation. Again, thank you, Commissioner Udaley. Very excited to bring the extension of the Nike sponsorship agreement and expansion of Bike Town to council this morning. And as Commissioner said, Nike has been such a wonderful partner in this, particularly during this period of health and economic crisis. To bring this enhanced transportation service to Portlanders is something that we at PBOT are so excited about, and I know the community is. So Bike Town has become an important part of our transportation network. Over 200,000 locals, commuters, visitors have used Bike Town. To date, they've given over 1.3 million trips in the first three years of our operations. Ridership grew consistently in our Bike Town for All and our Adaptive Bike Town program, which we'll be talking about a little bit later. I'm also pleased to be here with Lyft, who is really the industry leader in bike share. Lyft and Motivate have been strong operating partners for the past four years, and I'm very excited about moving forward that partnership. So today, we are asking council to take two actions. First is authorize the extension of our Nike title sponsorship agreement to 2025 for a grand total of $18.3 million. And that contract dates all the way back to 2016. And the second council action will be to authorize a new operator contract for Lyft, which is our provider and has been. So these two actions really allow us to do three major things, as Commissioner Udaley said. Expand the Bike Town service to more parts of East Portland, increase the number of bicycles from 1,000 to 1,500, with additional increases of up to 2,500 by the end of 2021. And we'll also replace the entire fleet with the electric assist bikes. Next slide, please. What this really means, it will mean that Bike Town will be more accessible and the work share system will work for more neighborhoods. The expansion of the service area will include 13 additional square miles in East Portland and also 2.5 miles in North and Northeast Portland. And also, with the pedal assist bikes, it'll make biking more accessible to people with different abilities, people that are new to biking, and also to our BIPOC communities who live further out. So staff from PBOT will be here to have more details in a moment, and we'll also hear from our partners in this work. But first, I'd like to introduce Scott Schneider from the city's procurement office. Scott will discuss the RFP solicitation that led to the Lyft contract, which is before you today. Scott?
Okay, thanks, Chris. So good morning. For the record, I'm Scott Schneider with Procurement Services. As Chris mentioned, you have two items before you this morning. The first is an ordinance seeking authorization to execute a contract with Lyft, Inc. for the ongoing operation of the bike share system, which resulted from a request for proposals. I'm going to provide a brief overview of that solicitation effort, and then I'll hand it back to the project team to tell you more about Portland Bike Share and where that program is going. On September 16th, 2019, Procurement Services advertised RFP 1328 for a bike share system. And on October 21st, two proposals were received. Both proposals were responsive to the requirements of the solicitation. The city's evaluation included the scoring of the written proposals, a physical evaluation of the proposed bike share system hardware, and oral interviews with both proposers. On May 15th, 2020, the city issued a notice of intent to award the contract to Lyft, Inc. No protests were received. Lyft has a current city of Portland business tax account and is in compliance with the city's contracting requirements. Lyft is not a certified minority-owned, women-owned, service-disabled, veteran-owned, or emerging small business. 3% of the value of this contract will be subcontracted to local businesses certified by the Certification Office for Business Inclusion and Diversity. Based on the historical data on the cost to operate the bike share system, the confidence level for this procurement is high. If council has any questions regarding the solicitation process, I'll be here to answer those. And otherwise, I'll hand it over to Steve Hoyt-Lebeth and the Bike Town Project Team.
Thank you, colleagues. Any questions at this point? Very good.
Hello, I'm Katherine Sherlo, Active Transportation and Safety Division Manager at PBOT. And I'm going to just frame up the presentation today by starting with some information about our Nike partnership. And I guess before I do that, I really want to thank our procurement partners, Scott, for your support, and especially our buyer, Teresa Green, who helped walk us through this process. So everything that we are here to present this morning, Bike Town's ridership successes to date, the expansion to East Portland with more bikes, the transition to an e-bike system, none of it could happen without Nike's financial commitment. But beyond that funding at a national level, what makes Nike special as a bike share sponsor is what they have brought us as a partner and a participant in our system. And so I'm going to talk just a little bit about that. As a global leader in design, they've really given Portland's Bike Town our distinctive branding, which captured the city's imagination, helped make bike share cool for existing riders, but also for new audiences, and helped us use Bike Town to celebrate the richness of the Portland community. As an example here on the slide, there's a shot of the Black History Month bike, which is part of our culture collection. I want to say a little bit more about the culture collection, since it's such a shining example of how the Nike partnership uses the bicycle to express our cultural identity through design. Many of you may remember the bikes on the screen here and the celebrations that accompanied their release over the last few years. You see the Native American Heritage bikes, there's two of them. The Ability Bike, which celebrates our community of people with a disability. The Latino Heritage Month Bike, the Ascend Bike, which celebrates the Asian Pacific Islander and Middle Eastern communities. Here's a photo taken at the unveiling of the Women's History Month Bike at City Hall. Special thanks to Commissioner Udaley for hosting and Commissioner Fritz for her presence there. And we've heard clearly from local veterans that Commissioner Hardisty's representation at the celebration for the Military Awareness and Appreciation Month Bike meant a lot. And then, related but separately, there has been a focus on design and bringing design into the community and the neighborhoods. And these are pictures of some of our neighborhood bike designers. Mayor Wheeler was one of the selection judges for that effort. What's in front of you today is technically an extension of the existing Nike contract, but in reality, it represents a strong renewed commitment moving forward at a time when it's not easy to make that kind of commitment. The amendment provides for an additional $8.3 million in sponsorship investment. And in addition to that $8.3 million, the city has the opportunity for up to $2 million more if key milestones are met relating to equity and system expansion. The amendment also extends the agreement through 2025, and that extension date is tied to the term of the Lyft operator contract, which my colleague Steve will talk about in just a moment. During invited testimony, we have Julia Brim Edwards from Nike. She'll talk a little bit about the Nike perspective on this partnership. And unless you all have questions, I'd like to turn it over to the Bike Town Program Manager, Steve Hoyt-Lebeth.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions at this point? Seeing that, go ahead and turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Catherine. So before I talk about the contract, I wanted to just give an overview of the bike itself and how people will use the system. So there's a number of similarities to our current bikes. You can lock them to a Bike Town station rack or to a normal rack like you can with our bikes right now. They'll have built-in front and rear headlights, and the basket will be able to carry about 25 pounds. So what's new is in the name. These are electric pedal assist bikes. And the reason we call them electric pedal assist is because the motor is only engaged when you're actually pedaling. If you're not pedaling, the motor disengages. There's no throttle like there are on some classes of e-bikes. But when you pedal, you really feel the boost. It's like, once you start pedaling, you feel like a superhero. And what that superhero status, once you get on the bike, will do for you is make it a lot easier for you to make trips, especially longer trips, by bike instead of car. And we think that's going to be a real assistance as we try to battle our very serious problems in terms of climate change and congestion. Next slide, please. But the thing that I really love about e-bikes is that they bring access and the joy of bicycling to more people. And I think it bears repeating what our director, Chris Warner, said at the beginning here. E-bikes open up bicycling to more people. And because of that electric assist motor, it may be because someone has a different physical ability, such as a senior or a person who experiences some level of disability, a lack of confidence about biking, maybe a sense within a person that they don't have the fitness to ride or about riding in traffic. And the special sauce is really that they're fun to ride. And I think that's really our secret weapon against climate change with Bike Town, is that fun factor. Because we do things that we like, not things that we know we should do. And if it's fun to ride Bike Town, I think you're more likely to do that instead of driving. And, you know, we really learned something from our electric scooter pilots. And, you know, people often have disparagingly remarked about the scooters that they're toys. And I think that that's a fair concern, that we want to make sure that a shared mobility vehicle is really ready for urban conditions, and the e-bike will be. But that idea of something just being kind of fun and playful actually brought people to a small mode of transport that we hadn't had. We found from the survey data that very, very, very high numbers of folks had never biked or never used Bike Town before. So we're bringing, if scooters were our gateway, Bike Town is a place we really hope that people will find if they have like something where they can carry items and really use it for a lot of their needs. Next slide, please. So there are three ways that you'll be able to check out a bike with our new Bike Town system. One will be through the Bike Town app. So through the app, you'll be able to just open, if you have a smartphone, to open that Bike Town app and then take a photo or just open up the camera, and it will actually allow you to open up the bike directly from the app itself. You'll also be able to do that through the Lyft app. So when anyone who is looking for a trip within the Lyft app will actually see the Bike Town bikes near them like they would, like they will the vehicles that are circling. And, you know, in Portland, Lyft is the major player in terms of rideshare, the rideshare market in terms of the number of trips that they take. So we think this is another way that we're actually frankly, because of our partnership with Lyft, that we'll actually be reducing car trips because we know that a lot of people will open that app who may not already experience Bike Town and actually give Bike Town a try. And then thirdly, for folks who are Bike Town for All members, people living on low incomes, they'll have the opportunity to have a Bike Town member car that they'll be able to tap on the back of the fender to unlock the bike. Next slide, please. So there's some things that will be changing about our pricing with our new membership with e-Bike Town. The main difference is that right now, excuse me, I'll just say the main difference is that with each type of our membership, you will pay a small per-minute fee, ride fee, for using the system. So for our users who are intending to use Bike Town a lot, the annual membership is going to be really the way to go. That will be a $99 annual fee, and then you'll pay just 10 cents per minute for the actual trip itself. And then there are also for folks who may be interested in using Bike Town but just don't tend to use it as much or don't want to have that upfront commitment. There is the Pay-as-you-go plan, which is a dollar to begin the trip and then 20 cents per minute. And then for our people living on low incomes, our neighbors there, the Bike Town for All program, there's a $5 a month charge plus a 5 cent per minute. Lyft, for the first several months, will be providing every Bike Town for All member with a $20 per month ride credit that they'll be able to use toward trips. And then later in this first six or so months of the program, they'll be transitioning to a program where Bike Town for All members will be able to bring bikes back to stations and receive ride credit that will create kind of like a budget for them to use the system that they won't have to pay for. Next slide, please. So now, I just wanted to talk about the major business points of the Lyft contract. Similar to our current system with our contract originally with Motivate that was acquired by Lyft, there are no city funds required for the day-to-day operation or for any of this expansion or of the transition to electric bikes. That is all covered through our sponsorship agreement, primarily with Nike as our title sponsor, and then the revenue that is generated from the system. Lyft manufactures and owns these bikes, and so we will continue to own the existing equipment, which will be the Bike Town racks that you see in this photo and the station map panels. But all of the new stations and all of the new bikes will be owned by Lyft. I think I already mentioned this, but actually I already said this last one. And then I think Catherine mentioned this or Chris mentioned this earlier, but the contract will be synced just with the Nike sponsorship agreement. So the terms of those two agreements are kind of tied together. Next slide, please. So one of the things that we're really proud of has been the leadership that Bike Town has provided nationally in terms of our equity hiring and requirements that were part of our original contract that we've continued in our new contract. Those are referred to as the high road standards. And before I mention them, I just want to say that one of the additional benefits of the Lyft contract is Lyft's subcontractor for operations is Motivate. And so the staff that have been with us from the beginning have the opportunity to continue since they will still be one of the main contractors with Lyft. We're very happy in this time of COVID and economic crisis to be able to continue to provide good jobs to some of our local community members. And then the high road standards themselves have a number of different provisions in them, some of them dealing with minimum pay, some of them dealing with providing healthcare to full-time workers. And then one of the pieces that's been really unique to Portland, and I really tip my hat to the Coalition for the Colorblind Communities of Color, and specifically Alan Hippolito with Bear Day back in 2012, when we worked with them on creating these standards for the original contract, on having this very unique sort of recruitment frame where all of the recruitment happens in partnership with workforce and community-based organizations to ensure that we really get the richness and the diversity in that workforce that represents the city as a whole. And then there are specific hiring equity thresholds in the contract as well. And I'll just call out that 20% of employee hours must be filled by people who identify as Black or Indigenous. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And then we spoke about this when we were in front of council this spring, but that, you know, Bike Town is really an important part, we believe, of our COVID-19 recovery. Especially for folks who have limited access or no access to an automobile. Bike Town provides them that ability to, to, to travel in a physically distant mode, to be outdoors, which we know is the, the kind of the way that we have the lowest level of transmission. And I'll just note, I'll just note that Lyft has seen other cities with e-bikes that especially during COVID, they've seen an increase in, in, in trips and especially an increase in trips among women. And we have seen in our scooter pilot, currently Bike Town doesn't serve East Portland, but our scooter pilot does. During our scooter pilot, we've seen the percentage of trips in East Portland as a percentage of the whole citywide trips increase. And we think, we think again that that speaks to people's desire, especially for people who are essential workers, to have an transportation option that does not require them to be in close proximity to other folks to make that choice. Next slide, please. And then this is my turn over to my coworker on the project, Roshan Korean, who is our manager for our equity outreach and engagement work. So I'll turn it over to Roshan. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks to everyone for having me here. My name is Roshan Korean. I'm part of the Bike Town team. I manage the Bike Town For All and Adaptive Bike Town programs as well as our outreach. I've been charged specifically to lead outreach in our new East Portland neighborhoods. And as we change and expand a transportation system that includes changes to our city in the midst of a lot of change, I've also been self-charged to monitor and work to rectify when we are doing harm in the streets for our most vulnerable in our communities. Our outreach work is being centered in the results-based accountability process centering race, which I know the council has had some training in. Evaluating our performative measures of success is part of our iterative process where we will continue to identify and dismantle the root cause of some of the barriers that folks face around using bike share and center our limited resources and engagement efforts on some of our most precious in the community right now, which is our youth, our businesses, especially our BIPOC-owned ones, those living on low incomes and with different abilities, our immigrant community, and thinking about a whole new group of folks that have become extremely vulnerable in the midst of a racial and viral pandemic. Thankfully Lyft and Nike are the kind of partners that have consistently shown up for that work, for those conversations, for finding solutions outside of the box and connecting people and resources. The Lyft local team especially has gone above and beyond a contract in the past in supporting Bike Town For All and forging new partnerships. They simultaneously nurture the many programs we throw at them, including a transportation wallet pilot program I led in Affordable Housing, which helped us sign up 100 Bike Town users in a sweep of transportation fairs that connected residents to all of the transportation services around Portland. It taught residents how to use their service and the tech involved and gave an opportunity for a household to move freely around Portland without having to think about cost. Lyft is also the kind of partner that can create Bike Town partnerships that extend the reach of our Affordable Access Program. So one huge and exciting change for Bike Town is that the age to ride will be changed from 18 to 16 and thus be accessible for high schoolers. In early 2020, Lyft launched a Lyft Up Bike Share Access Program for youth with LeBron James and their Bike Share Partners in Chicago and New York City. This program provided free Bike Share access to low-income youth through a signup program with the YMCA. Lyft has mentioned they're interested in working with PBO to extend this Lyft Up program to Bike Town youth in 2021. Additionally, to connect to our youth, we hope to use our existing robust Safe For Us to School programming within PBO to help develop our youth voice and reach. We'll be working with our Summer Works interns to develop youth education as well as programming around some of our business outreach. They'll be connected to our new and improved Transportation Ambassador Program, which is a volunteer wing of PBO with a BIPOC and youth focus to connect to people, jobs and new workforce and career development opportunities, especially in transportation and transportation justice focus. Because we have seen it's important that the systems that we put in place are represented by those affected at all levels. And so we'll also be working on some business outreach in East Portland with a focus on our BIPOC-owned businesses. We will be working alongside our Safe Streets Healthy Businesses team as another touch point on their messaging, but also announcing the new and exciting changes that are coming this fall. Through this outreach, before launch, we hope to announce any changes they might see in September, provide resources for more education and feedback, demonstrate another way for clients, patrons and staff to get to their businesses, gauge interest in employer programs or eligible discounts and provide space to express other ways that Bike Town as well as PBO can better support their businesses right now. I was also fortunate to be part of the contract negotiation team and feel extremely grateful for the windy road that led us to this point and with the continuation and growth of our strong partnerships with Lyft and Nike. It's making the transition to our new, new and improved system that much easier. And while our resources are absolutely limited for the enriching and expansive equity work involved with successful expansion, our team finds creative solutions and sources of support along every step of the way. As Steve mentioned, we are able to continue our Bike Town For All program. And he mentioned how much it will cost, $5 a month, 5 cents a minute. Each member will receive $20 of bonus ride time. That's equivalent to 20, 20-minute rides per month. Another example on the power of partnership is with our adaptive Bike Town partners who are currently stepping up and providing a location for folks to sign up for Bike Town For All as a trial during this season. During COVID, we had stopped our general public and partner in-person workshops, decreasing access for our cash-paying our unbanked or underbanked members who are required to attend a workshop to sign up. I'll let Craig Roche here representing Albertina Kerr speak more to our joint plans to engage the adaptive community in 2021 after our successful adaptive pilots in 2017 and 2018. I'm also going to cede some of my moments to Charlene from Multnomah County Health, who will be speaking shortly about the, the intersection of public health and transportation. And so just, I'll just wind up with saying our team acknowledges that Bike Town's potential to engage around transportation justice, connect to jobs and businesses, provide an outlet for physical and mental wellbeing, speak across different levels of incomes and abilities, connect our Portlanders that have been pushed out to old and new people and places. We've already done so much work around keeping and building genuine relationships that connect Bike Town to many programs across our bureau and beyond. And we seek, we're continuing to seek out unlikely partners and build upon the ones that we have right now. So with that, I'll turn it back to Steve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roshan. I just have, this is just our last slide for our presentation. This Sunday, we celebrated our fourth, our fourth birthday for, I'm sorry, my mic's a little bit off. Our fourth birthday for, for Bike Town on July 19th. It's been, the four years has gone very fast. We're incredibly proud of the work of our community and partners, both Nike and Lyft. And all of the community partners we have on Bike Town For All and our affordable housing partners and getting us here. And we're really, really excited about something we've really wanted to do since we began this program, which is to expand into East Portland where we know the need for bicycle access and transportation access is great. And to bring e-bikes, which is the, you know, the fact that when we, the first day that we have e-bikes, we will be, they'll be available in significant parts of East Portland is something that we're really excited about. But I just want to say that one of the hallmarks of our partnership has been not resting on our laurels and really always trying to find, always expecting more of ourselves and more we can do. Number of the innovations that we've brought nationally to Bike Share, even though we were the 65th city to actually launch a Bike Share system, I think speaks to that. And a big area of our focus is going to be on continuing to reduce barriers to bicycling into Bike Town, especially with our BIPOC communities. And also just seeing how we can really use Bike Town more as an instrument of climate, to reduce climate change and, and our congestion problems. So that concludes the end of our staff presentation. We do have a number of members that have invited public testimony besides our actual, besides public testimony as well. So I will turn it back to the mayor for, to facilitate things.
Very, very good. Thank you. Excellent presentation. And before we get to that, to the invited testimony, Commissioner Fritz has a question. Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you for the presentation. There's a lot of really good things going on. You're not going to be surprised by this question. And the question is about helmets. I was concerned when we first started Bike Town about the lack of availability of people, of helmets for people who don't have them. And was particularly concerned in the good old days when we were in City Hall and I saw so many people riding around without them. And I was assured that that wasn't a problem because the bikes were clunky and they didn't go very fast. And now they're going to go 20 miles an hour. So what's the plan for helmets?
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. And I actually had it in my remarks and I forgot to say it. So I, and I'm not trying to sidestep this question, so I want to be sure of that. But I believe this will be the, I don't think we have any more presentations scheduled for this year for Bike Town in front of council. And I just, you are, you were there with that, during that first vote. And even though you expressed some concerns about that and priorities for that in terms of the funding, you were, played a very instrumental behind the scenes role and, and actually creating the partnership that we have with Nike. So I just want to, at this being the last time, I think you've probably seen about eight or nine Bike Town presentations. Say thank you for that support, even as you've continued to be very certain, be really precious to make sure that this is the best thing for the city. And so I did, I did want to speak to your, to the piece about, about helmets. And we spoke, we've both in meetings with, briefings with you and with council talked about our, our attempts to try to bring a helmet rental or kind of like a helmet on-demand system to Portland. And unfortunately, that company went out of business and didn't actually, wasn't able to execute on that. It's something that I personally, as somebody who always wears a helmet, I'm, I'm look forward to doing. But I wanted to get specifically to your question because you brought this up when we presented in April about with the addition of e-bikes. And I, and I want to say that the safety record of Bike Share nationally and with Bike Town locally has been very, very high. We have very, just if you look at the chances of, of being seriously injured on a Bike Share bike in the data, it's incredibly low. And I do want to underscore your point about just that, you know, bikes will be able to go faster. And we actually, after that, we, we worked with Lyft to kind of do some research on this question because of your inquiry about that. Professor Chris Cherry, who's actually one of the, he's at the University of Tennessee at Knoxville, along with John MacArthur with Portland State University, one of the national experts in e-bike share from the academic community. And he did a study looking at e-bike speeds and found that actually the speeds of e-bikes were only less on average, less than two miles an hour faster than, than pedal bikes. So that the, the difference in the speeds isn't as high as one might expect when we're thinking about e-bikes. And again, the bike is only, goes fast when you're pedaling. So that you're, you're, you're very engaged in that. And in his, I'm just reading from his study, he said, there is no definitive answer regarding whether e-bikes are more or less safe than conventional bicycling. So given that, I want to say that bike, helmet access is incredibly important to us. All of our signage and in the app encourages users to wear helmets. I'm sorry, I'm going to read from my notes because I want to make sure I get it through this and I'll try to be faster. We'll continue to give away free helmets at all of our Bike Town For All workshops that ensure people will have helmet access. We, in our youth, youth-related programming, as we go down to 16, we'll provide free helmets at all of those, at those events. We have a partnership with Nutcase, a local bike helmet manufacturer to offer Bike Town riders a discount on helmets. And that's, that's, I think that's all I'll say on that. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner.
Thank you. Could I just have a follow-up? I appreciate the response. I remember when we, when the scooters came out, there was a big giveaway in Pioneer Courthouse Square. And just for the record and for people's information, I found when one of my staff had a crash on a bike, a regular bike a while ago, that helmets wear out. And if you've had your helmet for five years or so, then they're probably, you need to get another one. So to the extent that we can help people understand that. And, and that's even if you haven't had a crash, just the, the padding inside or whatever it's called disintegrates. So that, that was news to me. And I, I just want people to know that we do want them to wear helmets whenever they're riding on city bikes and city scooters. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hardesty has her hand raised.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that fabulous testimony. And I think you should probably put that picture of the commissioner on the bike and some art collection somewhere. Seriously though, I noticed that we're going to lower the age of consent from 18 to 16. And what I know is that when the age requirement was 18, there were a lot of under 18-year-olds that were using Bike Share. And so now that we're going to lower it to 16, I'm expecting 12, 13, 14-year-olds who believe they are 16 in their mind to be also utilizing this Bike Share. And so that creates more opportunity for accidents and and, and injury. And so I would like to know what was the reasoning to go from 18 to 16? And how are we going to make sure that we don't have 12, 13 and 14-year-olds with mommy and daddy's credit card actually using Bike Share? And let me just say, before you answer that, I am absolutely thrilled that Bike Share is moving to an electric bike option that will put old people like me on bikes much more readily than I would do otherwise. And so I am thrilled with the direction the program is going. So I want to be really clear about that. But just knowing how the real world operates, we did not have compliance at 18 and we're not going to have compliance at 16. And so would you tell me how you perceive that working out? And what you will do when we find out that there's a lot of little dollings that are pretending to be 16? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hardesty. And thank you for the input that you've given to staff, both at previous hearings and during the briefings that we've done with you over the past couple of years. And for the record, I want it to be known that I have never, ever thought of you as an old person. And neither do I think anybody else on staff does. You were the.
I'm getting older by the moment, trust me.
I think that, I think that the, when you became a Bike Town model, I think we, we obviously know that you missed one of your callings in life. But to your question, which is serious, I mean, I think that, you know, one of the things is, is that to us, it was very important to try to reduce the age to 16. And I'll just say that there's a couple of pieces of that. One is, is just equity and access. You know, moving to East Portland, we know that, that our East Portland high school students have lower levels of transportation access than parts of the other, other parts of the other parts of the city. And also just in terms of, just in terms of climate and really trying to create a culture among our youth of, who are, tend to be really some of our climate justice leaders to make sure that they have access to that system. That we require, we will be requiring, to get to your question, I want to be honest with you, that it is always challenging when we have any shared vehicle where a credit card and a mobile phone is the, is kind of a remote way to qualify folks. There is a parental guardian sign-off that will happen as part of that. And I can provide you as part of that, as part of that registration flow. I would like to, as opposed to trying to answer this only half-right, get back to you and your staff with a written answer. And then if, if you, if you desire a briefing, but just to make sure that I, I actually talk to you about that process in a more accurate fashion.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
That is, I think, go ahead. Yes. And so that is our, that, I mean, that is a, I mean, that is, I think that's a, a very reasonable and smart concern for you to have. And I, and I will say that with your direction, we will both get back to you with more information on that. And be sure to monitor that and, and work with our Lyft operator team to do this. And I would just, will say that we're always, and we deal with this with fraud, on the fraud side with Bike Town For All. There's always, you're always on this continuum between, if you're trying to prevent fraud, then reducing access or access or making it harder for people to get in by creating more layers of verification and providing more access and have more opportunities for fraud. So with Bike Town For All, just to be perfectly frank, we've gone really hard on the access side of making sure we have a lot of people. We have lost a number of bikes because of that, creating that access that we've. But it's just something that we're always trying to, it's just always trying to find this balance. But I, we're talking about public safety here and not about just a capital asset. So I, I think that your question is well taken. Thank you.
You know, Steve, I just want to say, I appreciate you being thoughtful in that answer because it, I didn't. You know, Steve, I just want to say I appreciate you being thoughtful in that answer because it, I didn't expect you to be able to pull a complete answer out of the air. But it means a lot when, when, when city employees actually help us understand the process that you're going through to make a decision, right? Because I I know that that's a question I'm sure a lot of parents would have. And so I really appreciate it. And my office is here to help you and and us figure out how we can make this accessible and safe and make sure that we are not putting young people in danger. Thank you.
Might I add something? Commissioner Hardisty's question, also that to the point of the programming that we do with Safe For Us to School, we're really hoping to develop an e-bike education and Bike Town specific education program where they have to go through the rules and fill out a test and then maybe potentially get a discount. So somehow working to incentivize that would hopefully bring more youth through that pathway where they have to learn the rules and get signed off in the appropriate channels.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Daly.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is an interesting conversation. I want to say that I do support lowering the age to 16. We allow 16 year olds to get behind the wheel of an automobile. So I, I would find it hard to justify not continuing to not allow them to legally use our bike share system. But I do have questions for Steve about liability for underage users. Does that parental write off include some explanation of their liability for? One, allowing their 16 and 17 year olds to use bikes. But two, if if someone under 16 is using the bike, what's the liability there? Whether they allow it or not? And what's the penalty?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Daly for that question. And I will just say that we tried to lower in our negotiations with Motivate originally on this contract. We tried to get the, the age lowered and and there at that point, the concern, they had a concern about this issue of liability on their end of things. And we, and we pushed on this and actually made it a condition of the request for proposal because it was very important to us to kind of provide the access and to have those both things. I'm getting a chat through one of another channel of the image that was sent. And I'm afraid if I try to see if I can bring it up for myself, I'm not sure I can. But I just, I would, again, I just don't want to give an answer that's not completely accurate. So I'd like to just actually get back to all of council with this since we've had two questions on it. But we, we worked with our city attorney's office. They were intimately involved with every negotiation of this contract. And so, you know, the, the primary duty of our, of our attorneys is to make sure to protect the city in terms of liability and just exposure of risk and also protect our citizens. I am fairly confident that this and and using the bike that there is a that there is something that protects at least the city. Of course, there's a question of of the user itself. But I, let me get back to, I would prefer if you would would allow me to get back to you just to make sure that we provide accurate accurate information. Thank you.
Sure, no problem. And I'm, I mean, I am interested in the question, you know, sometimes youth will find a workaround on their own. And sometimes parents are actually enabling the unlawful behavior as we've seen with scooters, with adults riding around with children on our scooters or adults activating a scooter and letting their younger child use them. So, you know, we can't control for every kind of bad or irresponsible behavior. But I am interested in what, what we do have in place. I have a question about a completely different topic. And I'm going to put Catherine and Steve on the spot a little bit and hope and hope I don't make people too uncomfortable, but I think it's an important conversation. So you hear a lot about public private partnerships. And on one side, how necessary and vital they are. And on the other side, a lot of skepticism from the public about those partnerships and about how corporations may be benefiting from them. I am a shop local, small business advocate. I am a vocal critic of the sharing economy. But I'm also the transportation commissioner that's very happily being bringing forward the bike share program with Lyft and Nike. So I was hoping that you and or Catherine could talk a little bit about how important those partnerships are and why the city of Portland is choosing to go with very, you know, large corporate entities to partner with on our bike share program. Because I think that's a question out there in the public. We definitely saw some criticism when the program first rolled out. And I think we should talk about it.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Daly. I mean, I'll.
Steve, can I take a stab at it and then turn it over to you?
I always defer to you, Catherine.
Thank you very much. I would just like to take sort of 10,000 foot answer and then hand it over to Steve, who has just so much more exhaustive knowledge of the field in general. But just from the 10,000 foot answer that relates to scooters as well. What we're seeing throughout the country as time goes on is that scooters and bike share like public transit do provide an important public service. And in almost no situations can they support themselves without some sort of public investment or some sort of public subsidy. And so that, given Portland's history of wanting bike share and moving forward a bike share system without a lot of public investment and our current situation in which we don't have a lot of extra money lying around. We find ourselves in a situation where that kind of public private partnership dramatically extends the type and reach of services we can offer to the public. And we didn't take it lightly. We thought a lot about the kind of RFP we could put out there that might have been drawn more local providers. But there is no way we could have gotten a system of this reach without that type of RFP and without the type of sponsorship we see from Nike. So I'm going to stop there.
And Catherine, I'll just say, you know, sometimes it does feel like, and I'm not talking about this situation in particular, but that we're giving away more than we get. But our partnership with Nike in particular is somewhat extraordinary on Bike Town. Do you want to speak to that?
Absolutely. I will, in fact, I'll speak to that for both Nike and Lyft. And I would like Steve to weigh in on this as as well. But the, the Nike partnership, they are giving us a level of sponsorship. And I am quite sure that Julia will speak to this as well, that goes above significantly above and beyond the types of investments they make in many programs. And they have pushed us hard over the past years to connect very closely with Portland culture. They pushed us hard on the equity front. And they've made it clear that the value of the sponsorship to them is the connections to the, the city of Portland and the community and the, the benefit that it provides because there is such a strong investment in this community. That's meant that we, it's a level of generous sponsorship that we haven't seen in other parts of the transportation work that we do as people. So that's been, it's also been a powerful connector with Portlanders, which has provided tremendous benefit to us just in terms of brand and vitality and excitement about the system. But I Lyft also is really stepping up here in terms of the level of commitment. The, the four or five months that we have spent negotiating this contract, whether I wanted this to be the case or not, has made it crystal clear that Lyft's costs are not covered for this, for providing this level of system, that, that it is a passion project in many ways for them to and a, a building toward a suite of micro mobility options. In that sense, they are giving the city a very strong benefit as well. So I'm going to have Steve add that if you have additional things.
I guess, hey, Catherine, this is Chris. One other thing I would like to add is, is just in terms of of all the things that Roshan talked about, those are the things that aren't happening a lot of other bike share systems. And it's because of the sponsorship, but it's because of the community oriented work that we're doing with Nike and Lyft. So I don't think this is your garden variety type of sponsorship. This is really more of a, of a partnership. It's, I think, deeply rooted in the community. So, but thank you for the question because it, it really does talk about the ethos of of the program that we've set up.
All excellent points. This is a really important conversation and I think we could continue this. But I have to point out that we have a really busy agenda today and we still haven't even gotten to the invited testimony. So I would encourage us to move along unless anybody has a, a very significant question they'd like to ask at this particular moment.
I am happy with the response and I am done with my questions.
Good. No, it's a great question. Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Invited testimony. Who do you have?
Julia, I think you're up first.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Julia Obermehds, Nike Senior Director for Global Government and Public Affairs. Oregon's been our home for more than 40 years and our roots run deep in the state and here in the city of Portland. I want to thank you all for the invitation to participate in this morning's council meeting to speak in support both of the next phase of Bike Town and to the partnership we've developed with the city, Portland's Bureau of Transportation and Bike Town Riders. Before I say a couple of points, I just want to pivot back to the earlier conversation because this might be my last opportunity to thank Commissioner Fritz on this particular topic for the support and partnership. And always I thought of her this morning when I pulled out my Bike Town helmet because I knew that this topic would come up. And I really appreciated her advocacy over the years for the safety of Bike Town Riders. So we're going to miss your voice, but I know we all will be remembering that as we move ahead. So I want to start this morning by expressing our appreciation to Commissioner Daly and the PBO leadership and staff of the partnership we've experienced the last four years. It has been strong and deep and it's been grounded in a common vision, in innovation and in a commitment to work together to create a Bike Town accessible to all of our community. Leveling the playing field for all as part of Nike's purpose to create active communities and increase access for all while also embracing sustainability. When it began in 2016, Nike was the founding partner and titles and title sponsor for Bike Town. And as part of our continued investment to uplift communities and advance purpose in our home state, Nike will be extending its sponsorship pending approval of the council of Bike Town through summer of 2025. In our four years of Bike Town, we co-created multiple collections of limited edition bike wraps to live alongside the vibrant orange bikes. Now, we love the orange bikes, but we were especially honored to elevate the limited edition collections that have been referenced earlier this morning. These included the locally inspired community design challenge and awareness raising culture collection, which were highlighted in this morning's presentation. I loved all the pictures. It just brought back lots of memories of the rollout and the launches and the designers and local communities we worked with. The culture collection was inspired actually by Be True bikes that were launched at Pride Month of 2017. And I know Mayor Wheeler participated in that launch of the first bike. In winter of 2018, Nike sponsored the Bike Town Design Challenge, inviting artists and community members to create designs celebrating Portland's five regions and neighborhoods, incorporating both iconic Portland elements and creative concepts. As a Southeast Portlander, I loved riding the Southeast bike, celebrating images and iconic art from my community. And I know others around the city did as well. Those five winning designs graced 50 of the fleet's bicycles. We also provided financial support to PBO's Adaptive Bike Town Program, which in partnership with Albert Unit Per, aims to increase bicycle access to people with disabilities. And in 2019, Nike partnered with PBO to engage and celebrate Portland's rich and diverse communities through a series of bicycle design wraps known as the Culture Collection. All of these designs celebrate the diversity of Portland's bicycling culture and our broader community. We appreciated the mayor and individual commissioners' participation and elevation of these bikes as they were launched into the fleet. We plan to continue the legacy of giving voice to Portland's neighborhoods and communities in Phase Two of Bike Town. Our goal moving forward is to continue the legacy of Bike Town of giving even more people in our community. And I think this proposal that you have before you this morning does that in more of our neighborhoods. So there's access to affordable, active and sustainable transportation options and that we do that in strong partnership with the city. So thank you again for the opportunity to participate this morning. I know Nike's been honored to partner with the city and rolling out what I think is really an iconic and special version of bike share in Portland. And I'll just close by saying we're going to be, we're looking forward to the ride ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Thank you for Nike's support. This is, this is outstanding and we really appreciate your leadership on this.
Great. I think we have a representative from Apano. Hopefully they're here.
Hi.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioner. Thank you. People bring me here. My name is Wanalee. I have worked at Apano as a Chinese community organizer for five years and I have manager, manage transportation projects for the last two years. When we moved into our new office, the arches of 82nd, Apano staff only have three parking spots. The 48 unit residents who live upstairs only have 10 parking spots. The traffic is getting worse on divisions in 82nd. There are more residential apartments, affordable housings and small business in the J District. Transportation is really important in our flowing community. As Apano's community development program, we want to make sure all the residents, workers and students have a safe, convenience, easy options to travel to work, to school and to everywhere daily. On December 2019, PBO staff and I facilitate a micro mobility focus groups with East Portland residents at Apano. The focus group was conducted in English, Chinese and Vietnamese with 10 residents. And none of them have ever ridden in electric bike before. As part of the events, participants try out the electric bike and give feedbacks on what they like and dislike. And participants were really excited to try the bikes even for seniors residents. I also have continued to feel questions from the residents and community members about supporting e-bikes in our community. I'm also part of the Bike Town Aviation Committee. I'm so excited that live overcome the two big difficult problems e-bikes face in J District. Hot, fast pass car assets and the powers, variable batteries will be the big steps for electric bikes used with people who have a language varies. We want to advocate the residents in J Districts have access to all transportation options. Our mission is cooperation with all partners and transit providers to be able to provide easier ways to help supports and educate residents or access the new transportation options. Thank you so much for the opportunity. Let me speak for Apano, speak for our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. Next, we have Ada Antonio from Acienda, CDC.
Hi, everybody. Can you all hear me?
Loud and clear.
Great. Well, good morning to you all. My name is Ada Antonio. I am representing Hacienda, CDC and the Collee neighborhood. I'm so happy to be here to talk to you all about my experience and the experience of the community, especially the Collee neighborhood when it comes to Bike Town. I think the talk about expansion and all of this great upgrade basically is so exciting. It's something to really. It's something to really look forward to. There is, there has been a lot that has been said about Bike Town that I would like to add to. You know, I think one thing that's been really big for me is that, you know, I was born and raised in the Colley Neighborhood. I actually was a resident in low-income housing for a majority of my life. And I loved my bike. I loved my bike. I loved to go to school on my bike. If my mom let me, I would do it. And so to think about how Bike Town has made a presence in the Colley Neighborhood has been so thrilling for me because it wasn't there, you know, 10, 12 years ago when I was, you know, 15, 16 years old. And I'm seeing our residents are so interested, they're engaged with the idea of Bike Town being in the Colley Neighborhood. As Korean had mentioned earlier, we were involved with the pilot, the pilot for the transportation wallet in the Colley Neighborhood this past year. And we have seen such a huge spike in interest for Bike Town. We have residents that come to ask and ask us, you know, how can I use the app? Like, how do I, you know, how do I use a bike? You know, are there classes that I can take? And they are very eager to just get their hands on and just become more experienced with using Bike Town. So, you know, this whole conversation around, you know, expansion and adding more bicycles is just really thrilling. I'm excited about where this is going to go. I know that our residents are excited. We've got lots of different students that need to commute to Madison High School, Grant High School, Jefferson High School, and, you know, the Somali Latino community that, you know, need to get to work. We have Columbia, Lombard, Killingsworth, and Sandy, all very important intersections there that, you know, I think biking definitely needs to continue to be a part of the conversation. We talk about other transportation options in the Colley Neighborhood because currently we only have one bus and it's the Bus 72. So, you know, I think if we're going to want to encourage our community to think about other other transportation options, you know, Bike Town is it. And, you know, what other better way than to keep, you know, people active, to create community, to encourage people to engage, to think outside of driving? You know, I think there's a lot here and definitely want to make sure that we are part of that conversation. And I know when I'm speaking on part of the Colley Neighborhood, when I say seeing Bike Town and PBO outside in those intersections, so, you know, Killingsworth and Sandy, it means a lot to us. It truly does.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next up is Charlene McGee from Reach and Monoma County Health.
Great. Other she is. Great.
Good morning.
Thanks, Charlene.
Wheeler and members of the Portland City Council. My name is Charlene McGee and I have the privilege of working as Monoma County's Race and Reach Program Manager. Reach stands for Race and Ethnic Approaches to Community Health. We are one of 31 grantees funded nationally by the Center for Disease Control and Prevention to address the racial and ethnic health disparities within Monoma County's Black and African immigrant populations. Within our grants, we have three different strategic areas. Nutrition, community clinical linkage, and for this conversation, physical activity and build environment. Additionally, we have three cutting themes: social cohesion and economic development. With that work, we work to ensure, and we work in partnership with our community to ensure that we're leading with the strength and wisdom of our community, preserving the culture, and ensuring that disparities are being addressed. Within our physical activity bucket, our work really works to bridge public health and transportation in the built environment, recognizing the intersectionality of transportation, both as a social determinant of health and at times a necessity to get to and from school, to access healthy food, to transport safely to everyday destinations, including parks, housing, and to walk around the neighborhood. So for the current grant that we have, this is actually our second round of funding. One of the demonstrated success from the Reach 1.0 work that we did in partnership with our partners at the city of Gresham, we did, we supported their first active transportation plan. Through that research, we learned that for every dollar spent to achieve their 20, 40 active transportation targets included in their transportation plan, there was a $2.48 benefit, $2.48 cents benefit. So two times the investment. We also know that with access to active transportation, we know that it reduces healthcare costs both for the new pedestrians and the bicyclists. We also recognize the positive impact on our environment as well. In Monoma County, when we look at our 10 leading causes of death, eight of those are chronic disease and we see connection between transportation-related measures to those different health disparities. So that include, you know, we think about our community members who may have asthma or experiencing chronic disease, definitely improving the environment have health benefits to them as well. Within the economic benefit, we know that household transportation saving is a benefit as well as external cost of vehicle travel. Additionally, with the introduction of the e-bike through this partnership with Bike Town, we know that e-bike will allow community members who may be experiencing health ailments to be able to ride, to ride bikes and engage in active transportation. As part of our Reach work, we are also part of a national effort through a program that's been launched called Healthy People Active Nation. And that effort is a national campaign that's looking at increasing the number of physical activity of residents throughout the country to 60 minutes per day. So this is another opportunity that we are excited about, knowing that it will promote increased physical activity within the community. So it would be remiss as a public health professional to not acknowledge that, you know, in the midst of COVID, biking is definitely a tribal mode that provides low exposure, a relatively low exposure once an individual who is engaging in that activity is adhering to public health guidelines. So that includes wearing the mask, practicing physical distancing, and certainly wearing your helmet. With our continued and growing partnership with PBO, we're definitely intentional really about advocating and ensuring that the Black experience is centered in the active transportation policy, programs, and investments. Part of our Reach deliverable for this round is that we developed a transportation safety report. Within that report, we recognized, you know, another stark disparities around Black and Brown bodies being injured, fatalities, and citation. So it, it, I mean, this is definitely a very important part of the conversation to ensure that with this support, that we ensure that that work continues to, you know, be brought forth. We do ask that, you know, you also consider allocating resources to support infrastructure development and maintenance that are equity focused, that promote safety in the use of public space and roadways, especially with the expansion out into East County. We know that there are parts of our city that have, that have infrastructure that could benefit from maintenance and additional development efforts. We welcome the opportunity to co-develop a transportation safety campaign that is focused on eliminating disparities and equities that certainly promotes the health benefits of biking and engaging in active transportation. We are excited about the opportunity to expand the Bike Town, Bike Town for Our Partnership to explore a prescription bike program where we would love to partner with our community clinical staff. That includes community health workers, where our doctors and Reach partners can prescribe bicycle use to promote health benefits and improve the health of our community. Additionally, and lastly, we do want to encourage and welcome ongoing partnership with Bike Town and PBO so that we can maximize the benefit of this program and opportunity. And it would actually be remiss also just to share, last year, we sponsored the city of Gresham's first joint team celebration. And working in partnership with PBO staff and Bike Town, we were able to secure, I believe it was more than 50 bikes and engage the community in bike riding out in East County. So thank you for your partnership and we look forward to the work that's ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. And our last speaker is Craig Rush from Albertina Kerr, which will talk about Adaptive Bike Town.
Before we do that, Commissioner Udaley has her hand raised. Commissioner Udaley? No.
Oh, no. That's a leftover. Sorry.
Okay. Should I go ahead?
Yeah, please go ahead.
All right. Well, good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, and guests. My name is Craig Rush and I'm the founder and director of Kerr Bikes, which operates the Adaptive Bike Town Program. I'm here on behalf of Albertina Kerr Centers and the Kerr Bikes manager, Ryan Ross, who could not attend today's hearing. Kerr Bikes is a program of Albertina Kerr Centers, which is an organization that serves children with mental health concerns and children and adults with developmental disabilities. We feel incredibly grateful to be part of this amazing program. And I think at this point, we'd just like to share what has been happening since we were last here. I think Ryan presented a couple of years ago after the pilot program had ended. So this is our fourth summer and we've seen growth in the program every year. Last summer in 2019, we had over almost 200 rides with over 1,000 hours of riding time. 90% of those rides were by people who identified as having a disability. 80% of those were first-time, unique users. We've grown the fleet over the years with generous donations from Portland Parks as well as private organizations, giving us a total of 26 bikes right now, including two recumbent e-trikes provided through a Nike grant in 2018. Given the success of the program, we're eager to discuss how we can continue to improve and potentially expand the Adaptive Bike Town Program. To that end, I think at this point, we propose that we reconvene the work group that we originally engaged with prior to the initial pilot, the goal being to reach more adaptive riders in more parts of the city and be able to meet their needs with the highest standard of service. Some ideas we might want to include, we might want to explore include, should there be a more programmatic approach to what we're doing? Do we consider docking stations for point-to-point trips? Should we expand to include other centralized hubs or kiosks at transportation centers? Do we expand to other parts of the city that are underserved? And how do we incorporate additional adaptive electronic bike, electric bikes into our fleet? And what do we do to continue coordinating between Adaptive Bike Town and efforts with the direction of the Bike Town Program? We're really looking forward to knowing the best way to serve our communities going forward. You know, it's been a difficult year with the coronavirus, of course. And, you know, to date, Kerr Bikes were down 87% less revenue than we saw at the same time last year. And right now, because, right now, because of the coronavirus, we've only had 12 riders this year. Of course, many of our riders being part of the vulnerable population who would be most impacted by what's going on with COVID-19. Fortunately, we're able to continue operating the Adaptive Bike Town Program, given the generous grants and the contractual funding that we have with PBO. However, if we want to improve and expand this program over the coming years, we're going to need additional resources to help with outreach, public research, additional partnerships, and to offer more hours, more riding times, scholarships, and to explore new equipment that might increase ridership or add to the rider experience. We'd love to be able to serve previously underserved communities of East and North Portland and offer them the same recreation opportunities, but without additional resources, it's going to be hard to figure out how to make this possible. So just as you hear other testimonies, keep these things in mind as we think about the Adaptive Bike Town Program. Again, we're incredibly grateful to the city of Portland, to PBO, and to Nike for making this possible. And we know our riders feel the same way that we do, so thank you.
Thank you, Craig. And that concludes our testimony.
Very good. Thank you, Director Warner. Carla, how many people do we have signed up for public testimony?
We have five, Mayor.
Okay, we're going to, due to the lateness of the hour, and we are barely into our agenda this morning, we will limit public testimony to two minutes each, please.
The first person is?
I'm sorry, Carla. Again, I'll point out the council rules that were read at the beginning. Testimony must pertain to the two ordinances that are before us today or we will have to ask you to stop. Thank you.
The first person is Ian McKenzie.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ian McKenzie. I'm a member of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'm only speaking on my own behalf, however, because the committee was never consulted or informed about the changes that you're being asked to vote on today. I think that's unfortunate because there are issues that should have been vetted before this came to council, especially as an emergency ordinance. I'm really excited about the introduction of e-bikes and I will probably try them out on the day they launch. The expansion to service area is welcome if insufficient. I also support lowering the age so that people old enough to drive cars can ride a bike. What I'm concerned about is the cost of the new system. Today, you can buy an annual membership to Bike Town for $99, which covers 90 minutes of riding a day. Soon, every minute will cost 10 cents over and above the $99 membership. The 90 minutes that are currently included will instead cost $9, almost twice the price of a TriMet day pass. Most people probably don't use Bike Town that much, but the fact remains that every spontaneous trip that's currently free for members will come with a new cost. For pay-as-you-go members, the cost will go from 8 cents a minute to $1 to unlock plus 20 cents a minute. Someone I know mentioned that it will triple the cost of his commute. We should remember that people who use Bike Town to commute are more likely to be people who work jobs with early or late hours and who can't necessarily rely on TriMet at the end of their working day. PBO is quoted as saying they think this cost increase will be worth it. Maybe to some people it will be, but there is no public engagement done to pack that up. If we were simply adding e-bikes to the existing system as an option, I would have no problem with there being a premium cost associated with it. That's not what's happening, though. We're scrapping all the bikes that the city bought four years ago and replacing them with e-bikes owned by Lyft that will cost more to use. Other cities, such as DC and San Francisco, have kept lower-priced traditional bikes when they've added electric bikes to their bike share system. If TriMet or the Portland Streetcar were proposing such a large fare increase, or indeed any fare increase, we wouldn't expect it to be announced on a Thursday morning with the final vote happening the following Wednesday. That shouldn't happen for Bike Town either. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your testimony.
Next is Paul Frazier.
Morning, Paul.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor. Want to start out just saying I really appreciate this alternative testimony format. It's allowed me to be more engaged. I would not be able to testify if this was a regularly scheduled council meeting. So I would encourage us to take this trying time of COVID and apply it to how we can boost engagement generally. I share Ian's excitement for e-bikes and also share his cost concerns. I really do think, you know, I testified for RIP and talked about things being on the margins of, we can use economics to shift behavior. And I think it's a pretty big economic change that no longer does an annual membership get you free rides. Like, there's been models in New York where you get free rides up to a certain amount of minutes with an annual membership. And so I would really just encourage us to look at that. I'm also concerned about the Bike Town for Everyone becoming Bike Town for some people with increasing the cost for that program as well. I think if we're going to look at price, you know, helping with pricing, I think we should look there first. And I think I welcome the $20 grants, but what happens after that? I welcome returning bikes to stations to earn credit. I would ask that those be generous and we're not placing undue burden on those with already hard situations to earn transportation credit. I appreciate all of the Commissioners' concerns around helmets. I sent a link to a street I sent a link to a street blog article to the county clerk. Helmets, I believe, are a red herring. Look at the data. There was actually a study done where the hypothesis was bike share without helmets would lead to an increase in injuries. It led to a decrease because when there are more people out there, it creates a better sense of safety, drivers have to pay attention and injuries go down. I'd also argue we need to look at safety by design, offering protection for bikers. It's abhorrent to me, the city has already had to pay out millions in a wrongful death suit on North Lombard. It is labeled the same on the city bike route as North Vancouver. You have a 45 mile an hour arterial.
It's two minutes.
Same on the bike map. So just would look at us to get creative, push the boundaries, lower the cost. I know that we have to go last sentence. I know that we, you know, as people, staff testified, thank you, we are going as fast as we can, but I think we've seen lately that perhaps the old speed isn't fast enough.
Thank you, Paul.
Next is Clint Culpepper.
Welcome.
Thank you, Council, for hearing from us today. My name is Clint Culpepper. I'm the Transportation Options Manager at Portland State University and early partner of Bike Town. Bike Town's been an amazing resource for the city and for the Portland State community, and I'm excited to see the adoption of electric bikes, the service area expansion, and I'm especially excited to see the lowering of the age requirement. As Commissioner Udaley mentioned, certainly if we are allowing 16-year-olds to drive automobiles, we can trust them to ride bicycles. Portland State has been a huge proponent of bike share, and that's been shown by the nearly 1,800 students that are Bike Town members. Even with classes being held remotely since March, our students still took over 21,000 trips in the past year, traveling nearly 40,000 miles. With COVID's huge impact on public transportation, it has been clear that bicycles are a necessary part of any resilient transportation system. Bike Town has provided safe transportation to thousands of users during this time and not pushing those folks into automobiles. To Commissioner Fritz's comment about helmets, and as Paul mentioned, research continues to show that the danger to people riding bicycles shows that the danger is not a lack of helmet use, but rather automobile speed and size and a lack of straight, safe infrastructure. I expect Council to support all efforts to improve the bicycling network if they are truly concerned about safety. I strongly encourage Council to consider devoting funds to lower the user costs of Bike Town. As Ian mentioned, we have huge concerns about how these usage fees will cut off access to many Portlanders and are dismayed that there was no public input in this large change. Bike share is a vital piece of the city's transportation network, and if we want to take our climate emergency seriously, we need to remove barriers to sustainable transportation, not create them. Current events in our city have provided us with a few ideas of where you might be able to find those funds. I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Clint.
Next is Katie Gould.
Good morning, Katie. Katie, are you unmuted?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. My name is Katie Gould and I'm testifying on behalf of Bike Lab PDX. We have long awaited the arrival of e-bikes in Portland, but we're concerned about several elements in the contract announced last week. While we support the contract overall, most importantly, the conversion to e-bikes and geographic expansion, we do so with the following reservations. We're disappointed that prices to use the system rose significantly in every category, even for the Bike Town for All program for low income riders. Bike Town's 2018 report stated these members only make up 7% of Bike Town users, but take 20% of all trips. We have no doubt that Portlanders will find greater value in e-bikes, but we're concerned that these fair hikes will have a chilling effect on ridership and decrease access among people who use this service the most. Better alternatives to across the board rate hikes could have been reducing, instead of eliminating free ride minutes for members, increasing annual membership rates instead of per minute rates, price caps on Bike Town for All rides, or including non-electric bikes at lower rates. Discussion of these kind of alternatives should have been brought to the public beforehand with feedback from users and affected communities. The proposed geographic expansion is badly needed, but still comes up insufficient. Last year, P bot testified before this council that the goal in the RFP would be for citywide access, but it seems that even at the end of this five-year contract, citywide access still might not exist. We also support expanding Adaptive Bike Town and adding widely available trikes, which could carry bulkier items and provide more options for people who cannot use two-wheeled bikes. As a whole, we're disappointed this was the best the city could do. We're in the midst of a pandemic that has devastated transit ridership and are falling further behind in meeting adopted emission reduction goals, particularly in transportation. We urge Council to make this process more transparent before entering into future negotiations. If our current negotiation process doesn't allow us to do so, or the limitation against using any city funds is acting as a barrier to achieving our goals for this program, it's time to rethink how bike share is implemented in the future.
Thank you. And Commissioner Fritz has her hand up. Do you want to wait till the end of public testimony, Commissioner Fritz, or would you like to go now?
No, whatever. When, of public testimony, thank you.
Yeah, I think we only have, if I remember Carla correctly, I think we only have two other folks signed up, so why don't we get through those two individuals? And thank you for the testimony that was just provided, Katie. Appreciate it.
We have one more. Michael Harrison.
Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. My name is Michael Harrison. I'm Director of Local Relations at OHSU. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of P bot's proposal today. As the state of Oregon's Public Academic Health Center, we take public health very seriously, and as Charlene McGee from the county pointed out all too well, how people commute to work is very much a public health issue. OHSU has developed a significant transportation options program, including paying our employees to bike to work, for example, and our efforts are paying off. According to a 2019 employee survey, 17% of our employees bike commute. This is particularly impressive when our main campus is located at an elevation of 500 feet. This steep terrain prevents all but the most physically capable bikers from directly reaching our main campus. With all this in mind, OHSU fully supports P bot's proposal to expand the geographical service area of Bike Town and to convert the fleet to electric bikes. Electric bikes would make cycling an accessible option for more of our employees as well as the larger public, and we applaud the effort.
Thank you very much. And Carla, that completes public testimony. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Great. Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you, and I appreciate the testimony. I have a couple of further questions. Number one, why wasn't there any public engagement on this?
I'd like to ask Director Warner to address that.
Absolutely, and I was just?
Do you want to do that, Chris, or do you want me to do that?
Yeah, go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, hence just unmuting myself. My apologies. So, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. We have spoken indirectly with the Bicycle Advisory Committee about the fact that e-bikes were coming, and we have presented to council the contract that the contract was coming. It is true that we have not presented the details of the contract to the public, and really, that's been about the contract negotiation process and us working through it under our contract limitations and contracting requirements. And then also looking at the resource constraints and doing what we can to get the most bikes and the most area for the city. Our intention is to do significant outreach this summer as we roll out the system, and that outreach will include a great deal of incentives and partnerships through our frontline community partnerships effort with nonprofit organizations, as well as just reaching out to system riders to help them understand the change and ask what's working for them and what's not. We did put out a map for year one, but that map for year two will change undoubtedly based on what we hear back from system users, from our organizational partners and from the public. So, you know, it's what you're seeing is that balancing process between negotiating a contract and needing to get public input once we have the pieces on the ground and we can really help shape the next steps based on how those pieces are being used.
Thank you for answering. This is a five-year contract, right?
Yes, it is.
And is there any particular urgency to have it passed today rather than having some community input? Because in particular, I thought the testimony about why are we having all e-bikes rather than allowing people the option of having a lesser expensive one and the concerns about the cost for users? So is there an urgency we pass this today?
I will, I will speak to the urgency, and then I would like Steve to talk about the why all e-bikes, because in his role as the North American Bike Share Association Chair, he can really speak to what other, what has happened in other communities. But in terms of passing today, what we are hoping is for continuity in system ridership. We have set up a schedule that would allow us to bring online the new system as we phase out the old system and do so while there's still time to have good weather, good riding weather. So there is urgency here in terms of sort of moving it forward with respect to the contract, but obviously, we also need to hear that council is comfortable with this.
Thank you, Catherine. Commissioner Udaley has her hand raised.
And I didn't quite answer Commissioner Fritz's questions that I also hope Steve would raise, but Commissioner Udaley, please, maybe you could add in and then?
No, go ahead and finish.
Steve, will you answer the question about pricing and then the question about why non-e-bikes as part of this?
Sure. So in terms of our existing bicycles, so it's not financially feasible for us to continue to use those bicycles with the new electric bicycles. They operate on a different backend system by a company that's not affiliated with Lyft. So to do that would mean we would need to remove the controllers that are on the back of each one of those bicycles, put new ones on, which would be a cost of several hundred dollars per bike, more probably than the bikes are worth. And it would be very, very difficult and costly for us to do and would require us to renegotiate the contract to do that. And then, secondly, the reason that other systems that have done that, that one of the people in the public who testified, is that they had the same operator and the same supplier from one contract to the other. So that would be the first. The second piece about the cost of the system, you know, I think Catherine talked about this a little bit. For one, e-bikes are at much higher value in terms of like how many people we can bring onto them and how many trips we can shift. We see ridership in other systems that Lyft sees about a three to one ridership level on their electric bikes than their pedal only bikes. So in aggregate, we bring a lot, we get a lot more bang for our buck with e-bikes in terms of the investment and the number of people that are able to use them and we're able to choose them. And so that's part of the reason for us to go to a fully electric bike fleet is just to kind of really expand the access to that piece. The pricing piece is something that, you know, we're certainly not champions on the program team of higher costs. It's a product of, I would say, two things. One, electric bike share systems are more expensive to operate, and so the cost, which is in line with other e-bike share systems across the country, is comparable to that. And then, secondly, you know, we really asked a lot of, in this proposal, and that's, you know, back to I think when Commissioner Udaley's question of, you know, why, why we have an operator who is a large publicly traded company. When you ask for a lot, you really need a company with the financial resources to be able to deliver on that. And we also ask for a lot in terms of going into East Portland for this, at this first phase. It's a very large expansion of our service area. We've talked before about, just like transit, the, as density goes down, the cost of operating a system goes up because there's just not as many people at any one particular point to use that bike. So, you know, we, it's kind of like pushing a balloon. And we wanted that, and part of that is going to increase the cost of actually operating the system for our operator because of the large system. And we have further expansions that we are planning in the next years, next year to be exact. So the cost of operating it goes up. And I think that what I just want to come back to is our commitment on the staff side because we want everyone, whether that's on Bike Town for All or just anybody, that a barrier not be to using Bike Town be the cost. We have never turned anybody away on Bike Town for All because of cost and have covered the cost of people all the way. I am committed as a program manager to make sure that nobody ever is not able to use Bike Town for All because of cost. And we, you know, one of the things we didn't talk about as part of this proposal is in our negotiation with Lyft, we were, we were able to secure a portion of the sponsorship money for P bot. It's a small portion, but we expect it to grow over the coming years. And, you know, one of our big targets for that, besides making sure that we can cover the staff, you know, staffing costs of the program, is to look at how we can use the remaining money toward buying down the cost for people who really need that. And I think that our two focus areas are Bike Town for All users and then what I would just call our workforce users, who are folks who do not qualify for public assistance, but still are really, could be considered part of the working power, and those are the folks we really want to make sure have access to the system. Thank you.
All right. Very good. Any further discussion? Commissioner Fritz, do you have more questions or did you get your questions answered?
I did not. I appreciate the answers and I'll support the ordinance because of my respect for the staff in the Bureau.
Very good. That brings us then to?
Mayor, I've been waiting.
Commissioner Udaley?
Sure. So I want to thank everyone who came and presented today, especially those that gave public testimony. I'm surprised to hear that this wasn't brought to the Bicycle Advisory Committee. I'm disappointed that we're hearing anything but complete enthusiasm from the community advocates. I have a lot of questions now. I don't feel like I can get them answered in this session, so I'm going to move to remove emergency clause so that we have a week to get these questions answered and bring them back. And Catherine, I'm going to assume that one week delay is not going to?
We will make that work. Thank you.
Prevent us from rolling it out.
Yeah, we will.
I'm taking your motion.
Thank you.
Could I just suggest that instead of removing the emergency, you just set it over to next week? Because then if you can get your questions answered, it can still be an emergency next week.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Very good.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion. I move this item to next week's agenda.
All right. That's teamwork. Commissioner Udaley is going to have this continued to next week, correct, Lindley?
Correct.
Okay, good. So this is this item, both item number, 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 590 and 591 are continued to next week's session. Thank you, everybody. That was a really good discussion. I appreciated that very much. Now we will move back to the regular agenda. Item number 597, please, Carla.
Sorry. 597, oops, sorry. Page here. Appoint Zakari Sylcher as a new member to the Plumbing Code Board of Appeal, term to expire July 21, 2020.
Very good. Colleagues, today I'm requesting Council confirmation to appoint a new member to the Plumbing Code Board of Appeal, Zach Silcher. It's a privilege to recommend such a qualified member in our community to provide guidance on plumbing code appeals to the Bureau of Development Services. Zach has lived in Portland for the majority of his life. He is a small business owner and operator, and he has experience both in residential and light commercial projects. Zach's specialty is residential service, repair and remodel. He takes pride in providing exceptional customer service and lasting plumbing. He takes pride in providing exceptional customer service and lasting plumbing solutions. Terry Whitehill with the Bureau of Development Services is here to answer any additional questions. Thank you to Terry, Rebecca and BDS for a very successful recruitment process. Good morning, Terry.
Good morning. And actually, I think Zach is here with us also.
Great morning. Morning, Zach.
Good morning.
Thank you for, for being here. I don't know if my colleagues don't have any immediate questions. Zach, can you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in this important Plumbing Code Appeals Board?
Yeah, forgive me. This is my first Zoom conference, so I'll, I'll do my best here. Thanks for giving me the time and the opportunity. I've been in Portland for 36 of my 38 years of life. I started plumbing in the Portland metro area about 15 years ago. Since then, I've been involved in working, I was actually a part of the union. And then I went off on my own to start my own business. And yeah, I mean, that's pretty much it. I'm just excited to, to have this opportunity to be a part of the appeals process. And Chief Plumbing Inspector Mackenzie James was who referred me to this. And so I'm just grateful to him as well.
Thanks, Zach. And we really appreciate your stepping forward. We know there's, there's, there's a lot of technical aspects to this. This is a really important Board of Appeals. You've got exactly the right experience, so I'm very happy to recommend you. Colleagues, any, any further questions of Zach or of Terry?
Mayor, I make a motion to accept your report.
Thank you. And can I get a second?
Second.
So Commissioner Hardisty moves the acceptance of the appointment. Commissioner Fritz, seconds. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty.
Thank you. Zakaria, is that how you say your name?
Zakari.
Zakari. What a beautiful name. I like your name. Thank you for your willingness to serve. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Udaley?
Thank you. Aye.
Fritz?
Zakari, I can assure you that my first Zoom session was not nearly as smooth as that. Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Aye.
All right. Take your word for it. Thanks.
Wheeler.
Well, first of all, let me concur with my colleagues. The, I, I think it took me the first 10 Zoom meetings before I got to the point where you are right now. So I, I appreciate the speed with which you learned. I would expect that from a qualified plumber, somebody who can figure things out quickly. I, I am very, very happy to accept this appointment and I thank you for stepping forward. I vote aye. The report is accepted. The appointment's approved. Welcome aboard.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Next up, Carla, please, is item number 598.
Authorize a competitive solicitation for and for on-call construction services at Columbia Boulevard Wastewater Treatment Plant, Tryon Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant and associated pump stations for up three separate construction contracts for $18 million for an estimated annual construction cost of $6 million for each selected contractor.
Colleagues, I'm looking forward to bringing this to council, but there's some additional information we'd like to gather before we bring it to the council. So I'm pulling this item back to my office. Carla, if you could read 599, a second reading.
I amend contract with Brown and Caldwell, Inc. for professional engineering services for the Forest Avenue Water Pump Station Remodel Project Number E10611 in the amount of $317,072.
Colleagues, this is the second reading. We've heard a presentation and public testimony has been provided. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much. Next item, Carlos. Actually, before we move on, sorry, there is a logistics item I neglected to add. Commissioner Udaley, I would like to suspend the rules at this moment. And I would like to acknowledge you to add two four-fifths items to the end of this morning's regular agenda. Commissioner Hardisty. I'm Commissioner Udaley. Somebody smarter than me.
Keeping us, keeping us on our toes. So I believe I am to read an official statement, right? Portland City Charter, Section 2-113 and City Code, Section 3.02.03.05. Provide that matters not appearing on the agenda may be considered by council under suspension of the rules at any session. I move to suspend the rules for the purpose of considering the two resolutions I filed with the council clerk at the end of this morning's agenda.
We have, we have a second. Carla, call the roll on the suspension of rules.
Hardisty?
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the rest will suspend it. Commissioner Udaley. Do we need a motion, Lindley, to bring each of these items to the agenda?
So is the intent to have these happen now rather than at the end of the agendas?
No, they're to happen at the end of the agenda, but do we need to actually make a motion to put them on the agenda or no?
No, you, by suspending the rules, they are now on the agenda and Carla has assigned numbers to them at the end. So you're good.
Excellent. Okay, we're good to go. Thank you all very much for that. Thank you, Commissioner Udaley. We're on item number 600.
Amend the contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. for geographic information system software to increase it by $1,996,000 for a not to exceed total of $4,357,275.
Thank you, Carla. Colleagues, this ordinance will amend the contract for the city's enterprise licensing agreement, sometimes called the ELA, with Environmental Systems Research Institute Incorporated, sometimes called ESRI. And it sets pricing for use of the ESRI software suite for a four-year period through the fiscal year 2024. We have Matt Fried, GIS Program Manager here to present. Welcome, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners for Hardisty and Udaley. I'm actually Dan Bauer, the Deputy Chief Technology Officer for the City of Portland. And Matt and I have joined you today to present this topic.
Great, thanks, Dan.
We are here today seeking authorization to amend our existing agreement with Environmental Systems Research Institute, ESRI, for geographic information system software. And to increase that agreement by a total of $1,996,000 cumulative for a four-year term, which extends the agreement through June 30th of 2024. The city has a longstanding history with ESRI and it is a key technology in our GIS program, which is relied upon by many bureaus such as P-Bot, Water, BPS, Boact, Fire, OMF, Police and others. Included in the packet that was submitted to council for this ordinance is a letter of support signed by the directors of six of these bureaus, demonstrating how important this technology is to their operations. ESRI is the industry standard and leader in geospatial mapping and provides a complete set of desktop, server and web-based GIS applications, which are all widely used to support critical city functions. If you're not familiar with ESRI, you may be familiar with some of their software on a daily basis if you use things like the John Hopkins Coronavirus Resource Center or our city's own PortlandMaps.com. Currently, over 2,000 city staff members have software covered by this contract on their computers and it provides the mapping engine for many services, including PortlandMaps.com, which are extensively used by the public. Every day, ESRI GIS applications are used across the city for functions such as support for our first responders, keeping city utilities running, processing permits and implementing planning policies. These applications can be expanded in the use of data even more so with new products added under this amendment, including web-based scenario planning tools, data visualization applications and web-based applications for public engagement. I will now introduce Matt Fried, the city's corporate GIS manager, to describe recent examples of the value the city has received from this enterprise license agreement.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and members of the city council. I'm Matthew Fried and I manage the corporate GIS program in the Bureau of Technology Services. My program manages the contract with ESRI and provides GIS applications, data and support to city staff and to the public through PortlandMaps.com. I'd like to just share a few recent examples of how the ESRI applications are used by the city. Mayor Wheeler recently sent out an email announcing that the city was named to the 2020 What Works Cities Certification Honor Roll. He mentioned several examples of projects that helped us to qualify, which use these ESRI applications, including the planning of the distribution of a COVID-19 grocery store poster to specific language group areas and also the distribution of open data. The South Portland Addressing Project, which recently concluded, used ESRI GIS tools to plan and update over 7,000 addresses and street center lines as part of this project, as well as helped us communicate the changes out to other agencies and the public. They're already in use for planning the Columbia Lombard Wayfinding Project that you are going to consider at today's council meeting. Also, the POPS Amanda Permit System Upgrade, which was recently concluded, uses ESRI applications, which are directly integrated into the new version of the Amanda application, now that they've upgraded to this recent version. All of the licensing needed for this project is included in this contract and many other city systems integrate directly with the ESRI platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Lastly, council, I'd like to call out that funding for this is included in the BTS five-year budget plan and there are no additional unbudgeted costs needed. I would like to also mention that in light of the current budget situation, we have renegotiated this contract with ESRI over the last few months and have reduced the cost for the first two years by 5% and the total contract cost by 3%. We're now happy to go over any questions you may have.
Colleagues, any questions? Seeing none, Carla, is there any public testimony on this item?
Aye. I believe we do, sorry, one moment. No, Mayor, no one registered for this item.
Very good. This is an emergency item. Please call the roll.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz? Fritz?
Yeah, sorry, I had difficulty there. You had me convinced when you said PortlandMaps.com. I think that, that, that app by itself is well worth the price and I'm glad we're getting other stuff as well. Thank you for your work. Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Thank you for the presentation. The ordinance is adopted. Next item, please, Carla, is 601, a second reading.
Approve, approve findings to authorize an exemption for a class of public improvement contracts from the competitive bidding requirements and authorize the use of the alternative contracting method of job order contracting for alterations, construction services.
Colleagues, this is the second reading of an emergency item. We've already heard a presentation. There's been opportunity for public testimony for the business on this item. Seeing none, Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Udaley?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thanks for everybody who worked on that. Item 602, please, Carla.
Approve application under the Multiple Unit Limited Tax Exemption Program under the Inclusionary Housing Program for Prov. 3 apartments located at 550 by Northeast Gleason Street.
Colleagues, you're well familiar with the format of these particular items. We'll turn it right over to Dory Van Bockel. Good morning, Dory. Good afternoon, actually.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Dory Van Bockel. I'm the manager of the Development Incentives Team with the Portland Housing Bureau. So again, we have before you an application for the Multiple Unit Limited Tax Exemption Program through inclusionary housing. So as you remember, any buildings with 20 or more units are subject to inclusionary housing as of February of 2017. And developers have different options in order to fulfill those requirements in otherwise market rate buildings. So this particular project is going to be restricting 15% of the units at 80% of median family, family income for the 99-year duration. And with a 22-unit building that's fully residential, that amounts to just three units. It will have restricted affordability. And so the units that are affordable are representative of the total units in the building, so of, of what would already be built. And so that's 15% of each of the bedroom types, resulting in one studio, one, one-bedroom unit and then one two-bedroom unit. The multi, so as a tax exemption, is one of the financial incentives provided to this project through inclusionary housing for those who opt to actually provide units rather than paying a fee in lieu. And each multi-application, as it's called, does come to city council for approval. And in this situation, because the building is outside of the Central City Plan District, only the units that are affordable receive the tax exemption and the other 19 market rate units and the land will be fully taxable. And so that amounts to, for this particular project, a total tax exemption of around $40,000 over the 10-year period. If you're looking at it, over 99 years of the affordability restriction period, that's about a monthly tax exemption benefit per unit of $11. And there's an average difference in the rents over that, you know, if we're extrapolating out from current rents compared to the market rents and affordable rents of about $135 a month, that the rent would be reduced year after year. So I tried to keep it brief for you, but this is adding to our pipeline of affordable units. We have another, this is the 86th project. And we've got about 650 units now that are coming on the market as a result of the inclusionary housing program. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Dory. Anybody have any questions for Dory? Seeing none, Carla, is there any testimony on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have one person sign up.
All right, name for the record.
Hong Nam?
Hi, this is Hong Nam. I'm a representative of Portland Metro People's Coalition. And I just want to bring up, you know, as we're, I'm dealing with all this police violence, you know, whose city is this and who do we serve? This is such a low bar for inclusionary zoning. We should be demanding 50% of the units be affordable, not at 80% MFI. 80% MFI, MFI is 87,000, almost $90,000 a year. 80% MFI would mean people making $70,000 a year. And very few people I know make that much money. We are gentrifying this city and no wonder the police are brutalizing people and arresting unhoused people. This is what they protect. And just like we were talking about earlier with these public-private partnerships, we are just giving away way too much. You have the power as the leaders of the city. We should be remunicipalizing and creating land banks and expanding our public resources instead of giving away all these kinds of things to private developers. I mean, WDC Properties, Mark Madden donated $5,000 to Mayor Wheeler when he ran for as mayor, along with many other developers. You know, people, the Oregonian did that series about polluted by money. I can't breathe because we are polluted by money in the city. We need to reimagine how we do politics and run the city. Not only rethink public safety, but reimagine how we do things. This kind of neoliberal system does not work for us. We should think about what Martin Luther King Jr. said about the giant triplets of racism, materialism and militarism. Who do we serve? Thank you.
Thank you. Carla, is there any more public testimony on this item?
No one else signed up.
Very good. Any further questions, colleagues? Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty.
I absolutely couldn't agree more. I continue to ask questions about whether we're getting a right return on investment with this program. I will look forward to next year when we do a study to determine whether or not the city has gained anything from having this inclusionary zoning process. I, I absolutely think that we are getting a lot less than we could. I will vote for this because I, as you all know, I'm waiting for the study and we do need the study and we need to do better. because I, as you all know, waiting for the study, and we do need the study, and we need to do better. We will never, ever, ever reach our housing goals of affordability if we keep doing this nickel-and-dime thing. And I absolutely agree, 80% at $70,000, not even close to providing housing people can afford to live in in Portland. I vote aye.
You daily?
Aye.
Fritz.
I believe the parameters for the program are set in state law, so we probably need to get a state law change in order to be able to address the concerns. So that's, well, hopefully, that will be on our legislative agenda for next year. In the meantime, thank you for implementing the program as set by state law and by the city council, Dory. Aye.
Wheeler.
I support this. PROV III Apartments and other buildings brought before the council today brings the total number of otherwise private sector market rate buildings in the Inclusionary Housing Permit Approval Pipeline to 86 buildings, making a minimum of 648 units affordable. And I want to underscore this again. These are otherwise market rate units. So I agree with you. This is not supportive housing. This is not low-income housing. But in my opinion, it still fills a niche that would otherwise not be filled in the absence of this program. Could this program be better? Yes, I've actually believed that it could be. Does it need an analysis? Of course it does. That's why I've advocated for it. That's why I've supported it. And I think we've agreed as a council that trying to do a market rate analysis in the middle of the pandemic is not going to give us good information. And so we have reached a consensus to delay the study until we have the opportunity to do this, hopefully sooner rather than later in a more realistic market environment. I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thanks, Dory. Next item is six zero three. And folks, I know we have a long list of items ahead of us, but they're, they're actually going to go really quickly. Six oh three is next. It's the second reading.
Excuse me, mayor.
Yeah, sure. Commissioner Fritz.
If we were in City Hall, I would be taking a walk to go get to you right now because I didn't review the record for any of the second readings. So I'm wondering, I'm going to step away from the computer, and you could tell me when you're ready for me to come back. Does that work for the attorney?
On which, which items would you, you would like us to have you come back on the forfeits items at the end? Is that correct?
There are two regular agenda items, which perhaps we could hear first, and then I could take a walk so that I don't vote on items that I haven't reviewed the record on, all of the second readings on the renaming and the housing issues.
Well, this, this will be easy because I believe you're referring both to item six oh five and six fifteen, both of which I believe are going to be pulled. Are those the two items you're referring to?
Yes, but mine isn't pulled. Six fifteen is not pulled.
Six fifteen is not going to be pulled?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't we read six oh five first, then we'll go to six fifteen. Six oh five first,
Amend Title 17 and Transportation rules to update and add, and add clarification for the permitting and condition of driveways.
I'm baffled why, why we just jumped ahead. Is this the second reading or not?
Six, six oh five.
What are we on?
Six oh five. Amend Title 17.
Okay, I thought you said six fifteen.
Can I, can I jump in? This is city attorney. I think the confusion is we skipped six oh three and six oh four.
Yes, because I just did that at the request of Commissioner Fritz.
Okay. So we're on six oh five.
Correct.
I'm pulling this item back to my office, and we'll bring it back as part of a large packet of Title 17 changes.
Thank you, Commissioner Udaley. And then Commissioner Fritz, you're saying you do want to hear six fifteen today, correct? The resolution?
Yes. Yes, please.
Six fifteen. Refer amendment to the city charter regarding public use of city lands for permissive secondary purposes.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, mayor, and Commissioner Udaley and Commissioner Hardisty. I apologize for the confusion. If we were in City Hall, I'd be able to take a walk and not vote on the second readings. But because we're online, that makes it more difficult if they're in and out. So anyway, I'm very happy to bring this resolution to the city council to refer a city charter amendment to Portland voters for the November 3rd to 2020 ballot. The charter amendment will authorize incidental public use of Water Bureau properties outside of the Bull Run watershed.
Morning, council members.
Wait a minute, I'm not doing it. This would be allowed only after approval by the city council following a public process led by the Water Bureau in partnership with the Portland Utility Board to determine and set in city stone, city code and in stone, the appropriate secondary uses of public property managed by the Water Bureau outside of the Bull Run watershed. This amendment builds on the work that Commissioner Fish initiated while the Bureau was under his leadership and that he later supported to assure that Water Bureau funds are used for the purposes that they are intended. It is important to me that this work is completed before I leave office at the end of this year, and that's why I'm bringing the amendment now rather than waiting for the charter commission. As you know, last year, I led successfully the passage of two charter amendments to clarify the sanctity of the Bull Run watershed and the authority to enter into mutual aid agreements with other jurisdictions. This was in response to the troubling court ruling that questioned the council's authority to make decisions in the public interest for uses of the water fund. I'm excited to bring before you today this resolution, which aligns with council's shared values and which would benefit the public. First, I need to introduce amended versions of the resolution, the explanatory statement, and the impact statement. My staff and I experienced numerous citywide technology challenges while we filed, resulting in incorrect language being filed in the resolution. The title referred to in the ballot measure is incidental uses, which we believe is more understandable than permissive secondary uses. And that's what was posted in the council agenda item. Since filing, we also refined the explanatory statement language to better reflect the requirements of Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, thanks to Jonathan Simeone in the Office of Equity and Human Rights, Susan Meamba in the Water Bureau, and Maya Haim, and Lindley Reese in the City Attorney's Office for their expert advice. And the impact statement is revised to be more explicit on equity considerations, community engagement, and fiscal implications. So I'd like to move the amendments to the resolution, Exhibit B, and impact statement as a package, unless anybody would like to discuss them separately.
Commissioner Fritz, this is Lindley Reese. May I just clarify some terminology you used? The Exhibit B substitute is the ballot title, not the explanatory statement. So just to be clear
Exhibit.
Am I, am I, if, am I correct about that?
I thought Exhibit A was the, was the charter amendment language, and Exhibit B was the explanatory statement to be posted with the amendment language.
I, I, I believe it is the ballot title, Commissioner.
So am I moving to change it at Exhibit A, Lindley?
No, Commissioner, you are, in fact, your amendments were to Exhibit B, but Exhibit B is the ballot title, not the explanatory statement.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you for the clarification. Yes, so I move the amendment to the resolution, the ballot title, and the impact statement.
Second.
Thank you. Mayor, could we take a vote on that to put them on the table, to put the?
I can find my unmute button. Carla, please call the roll.
Hardisty.
Aye.
You daily?
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you, colleagues, for being patient with me. Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Motion's on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. So council may recall that I considered moving this measure to the ballot last year with the other two amendments. Based on community input, I decided to focus on the first two. We didn't hear opposition in public testimony, rather encouragement to focus on the amendments that we passed last year. Because we did considerable public outreach last year, I took the proposed amendments to the Portland Utility Board rather than starting over on community engagement. The pub enthusiastically endorsed sending the question to voters. As one member said, "The public should decide the appropriate uses of public lands and ratepayer dollars, not affluent lawyers setting their own agenda." My senior policy advisor, Astrid DeGoy, liaisons to the Water Bureau, will now walk us through the charter amendment.
Good morning, council members. My name is Astrid DeGoy, Senior Policy Advisor to Commissioner Fritz. I'm here before you all today to review the resolution referenced by Commissioner Fritz. The Water Bureau provides excellent water every minute of every day to Portlanders. This resolution, if approved, would add another community benefit. It would allow limited public use of some properties outside the Bull Run watershed closure area. These are properties owned by the city of Portland, managed by the Water Bureau, and could include community gardens, picnic benches on grass areas near water tanks, or other public uses to connect neighbors with their water utility. In 2014, a ruling in Multnomah County Court decided that the city charter does not clearly provide authority to the city council to designate these lands for public use using ratepayer money for maintenance. Currently, general fund money is needed to allow the public to use these public lands for green spaces, food cultivation, and picnic areas, or picnic areas. General fund money is also needed to comply with accessibility standards required by Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act when public access is allowed. General fund money is often not available for these uses, as there are many other competing city needs. This charter amendment would clarify the council's authority to allow public access to use these city-owned lands. If the measure passes, the resolution sets binding city policy requiring a public process to discuss allowed public uses and set parameters and limitations in code. It also requires annual reporting of all expenditures authorized by the amendment to both the Portland Utility Board and the city council. The public's incidental use under this amendment may result in associated costs to the water fund. For maintenance and accessibility, ADA improvements required when public access is allowed. The impact on rates will not be determined until the public, the Portland Utility Board, and the council decide what is allowed and what isn't. Also, the timeline to be set for making ADA improvements could affect the rates. The fiscal year 2021 budget prior to COVID-19 included a request for 1.5 million for ADA improvements spread over five years. That amount, spread over five years, would not result in rate increases. If passed, the proposed amendment would clarify council authority to permit or prohibit incidental uses by the general public of city lands controlled by the Water Bureau, provided the lands are outside of the Bull Run watershed closure area. Karen Spencer, a Portland Utility Board member, will provide public comment. This concludes my staff presentation, and we welcome questions.
Very good. Colleagues, any questions? I don't see any. That's always a good sign. Carla, is there any public testimony on this item?
We have two people. The first one is Karen Spencer.
Very good. Karen, two minutes, please.
I'm Karen Spencer, a member of the Portland Utility Board, which, as you know, is the Community Oversight Committee for the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services. I am delighted that the pub voted on July 7th to support moving this ballot measure forward to the voters. The remarks that I am about to give represent the individual views of myself and Ted Labby, the Executive Director of the Urban Green Spaces Institute, and my colleague on the pub. To save time, Ted and I have coordinated our remarks for presentation to you. Again, we are speaking as individual city residents today, and I thank you for your, your service on this issue. As we grapple with the impacts of the growth in our population, we should also consider our needs for natural areas and access to nature, such as community gardens, park spaces, and campsites that do not interfere with the water system. During this pandemic, we've seen the importance of having natural open spaces available for our residents. These spaces should meet ADA compliance standards so that they are physically accessible for everyone. Access to nature benefits physical health, cognitive performance, psychological well-being, and spiritual connection. Also, there are societal benefits to fostering a sense of community well-being and providing avenues for having high-quality interactions with one's neighbors. Reclaiming spaces for access to nature is very expensive, and allowing the incidental use of existing natural spaces is a much more affordable way of providing natural areas that our communities need. Additionally, when it comes to public land, there is an expectation that government works in a coordinated fashion for the benefit of its residents. During the water filtration hearings we had last year, a number of Sandy residents testified about the closure of the Dodge Park campsite. I mention this solely to relay the substantial distrust these actions created within the local community. Although the Water Bureau had not managed the park for quite some time, the local residents blamed the Water Bureau for that closure. Some residents would have been fervently against the filtration plant project moving forward no matter what. However, I believe that the distrust created by the closure only served a heightened tension. For this reason, I believe that the Water Bureau should be the steward for its relationship involving the use of these lands. Thank you for considering the views of Ted Labby and myself today with support of this ballot measure moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate your testimony. Carla, next individual, please.
Floyd Jones.
Good afternoon, Floyd.
Good morning. Yes, Floyd Jones. And today I am representing Water Accountability, Trust, and Reform. We are the organization that supported Commissioner Lloyd Anderson's lawsuit. And just to educate a little bit on the historical perspective, when Commissioner Anderson agreed to support this lawsuit, he told us of the history that when the city first began creating debt for its water and sewer users, the commissioner wanted to make sure that that money was only being spent on water, sewer, and stormwater, not unrelated items. And so, you know, we are proud that we succeeded on many, many items of misspending, and that money was returned to ratepayers. Commissioner Fish, you know, had argued that the remodel of the Rose Festival Building using ratepayer dollars would be a great deal for water users. Of course, not a great deal for water users. And in light of the lawsuit, money was returned from the general fund to the water fund. So, you know, this obviously is designed to be able to allow city council to use water funds as a blank check, which will make, of course, will add. You just cite the 1.5 million, not the tens of millions that have been spent on unrelated projects. Yes, Dodge Park, that was remodeled, and it's a great party place for the Water Bureau. It just so happened, in 17 years, I've been out to Dodge Park twice, when I used to be there a lot as a child. And on one of those occasions, the Water Bureau and busloads of Water Bureau employees, they sent the caretaker away, and they were there for their party. What's the chance that out of going there twice in 17 years, we went there on the day the Water Bureau was having the party for themselves? And the same with Palbutte, all that tens of millions of dollars. The court case didn't rule that there was no incidental use of Water Bureau property allowed. It was the use of Water Bureau funds for that that was disallowed.
That's two minutes.
Thank you very much. All right, that completes public testimony. Are there any further questions? Very good. Thank you for the testimony. Thank you for the presentation. Carla, please call. The roll on the resolution is amended.
Hardisty.
Aye.
You daily?
Aye.
Fritz.
Thank you, colleagues, and thanks to Commissioner Fish, who did such good work in making sure that the Water Bureau funds are spent on public purposes related to water. And indeed, we believe that this expenditure would connect neighbors to their utility and provide them the benefits that Karen Spencer mentioned. So thanks to Director Mike Stur, who's going to be retiring very shortly, incoming Director Gabe Fulmer, Cecilia Hune, the Water Bureau Finance Manager, for her amazing support on this measure. I'm also grateful to Jonathan Simeone, the ADA Title II Policy Coordinator within the Office of Equity and Human Rights, for his careful review of the ADA access that we are attempting to address. Also, Also, Maya Hamm and Lindley Reese, two of our city attorneys, who have helped provide me with, and counsel, with this charter amendment to accomplish what we intend for it to accomplish. And to stress that a future council that I won't be on will have to approve every expenditure under this charter change should it pass. They would, in terms of setting the parameters and getting an annual report each year as to what was spent on this function, should it pass. So I do believe that there's the appropriate checks and balances. The fact that the Portland Utility Board recommended strongly that we send it to the voters, because, as I said in my opening, the voters should decide this question, not lawyers. Thank you very much, everybody, and thank you, my Senior Policy Advisor Astrid D'Goy, and my Chief of Staff, Tim Praef. Aye.
Wheeler?
Good teamwork. Thanks for the hard work, Commissioner Fritz, and your entire team, as well as the Bureau team. I vote aye. The resolution is adopted as amended. And Commissioner Fritz, just to clarify, do you want me to text you when we're getting close to the forfeits items, or are you going to just be listening in the background?
I'm going to take a walk, and I will be listening in the background, but I will be muted and remain muted, so I hope that the city attorney agrees that that counts of not being present.
Lindley?
I think that'll work, Commissioner.
Good. It sounds like she'll get some exercise in the process. Take a few laps for me. All right, good. So then, with that, we will go back. We now have a bunch of second readings. We'll go back to item 603.
Amend evaluation applicants for dwelling units to make technical clarifications.
All of the items that we are about to read are second readings. They have all had public testimony and presentations. Is there any further business on 603? Seeing none, call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
I want to thank my colleagues for their support and the work that went into making these technical revisions, Adrienne Delgado and Mallory Beeb in the city's attorney's office, Nikki Gillespie and Matthew Shabel at the Housing Bureau, and Andreas Oswell and my Senior Policy Advisor for pulling these together. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Vote aye. Thank you for your hard work on this. The ordinance is adopted. 604, please.
Amend security deposits, prepaid rent, to make technical clarifications.
Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll. Second reading.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Colleagues, now we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine ordinances in a row. We cannot vote on them as a package. We'll have to vote on them independently. These are all relating to the renaming that we discussed last week. We'll start with item 606, please.
Rename a portion of North Lombard Street to North Columbia Boulevard between North Burgard Road and North Kelly Point Park Road to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Just like all of the following ones are second readings, we've heard the presentation as well as public testimony. Any further discussion? Carla, please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Well, these very small and technical name changes may seem boring to some, but they're exciting for people who live, work, and play in these parts of the city. As we heard, it creates confusion for emergency services, delivery, et cetera. So I want to thank Andrew Abbey and Zeph Wagner again for proactively fixing a confusing wayfinding program and for seeing it through. Thank you as well to community members for coming up to support the changes. I vote aye.
Wheeler?
I really appreciated the testimony and the presentation last week. In particular, I think they did a great job, the Bureau did a great job of making it clear that in an age of GPS navigation, how complex it could get very, very quickly on these particular streets, particularly for first responders where minutes make the difference between life and death. So I'm glad that the time was taken by you, Commissioner Udalee, and by the Bureau to go through and really sort this out and come up with a common sense solution with the support of the community. I'm happy to vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. 607, please. Also, a second reading.
Rename North Burgard Road to North Lombard Street to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. 608, second reading.
Rename a portion of North Columbia Boulevard to North John's Wood Drive from west of North Oswego Avenue to east of North Buchanan Avenue to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 609, please.
Rename Northeast Lombard Place to Northeast Lombard Court to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Second reading. Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Ordinance is adopted. 610, second reading.
Rename Northeast Portland Highway to Northeast Lombard Street to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
This sounds like music. It's great. Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 611.
Rename North Columbia Parkway to Northeast Columbia Boulevard to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. Ordinance is adopted. 612, second reading.
Rename a portion of Northeast Columbia Boulevard to Northeast Columbia Court between Northeast Columbia Parkway and Northeast 92nd Drive to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. 613, second reading.
Rename a portion of Northeast Columbia Boulevard to Northeast 92nd Drive, between Northeast 92nd Drive and Northeast Killingsworth Street to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
Also, a second reading. Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. The last one is 614, second reading.
Rename a portion of Northeast Killingsworth Street to Northeast Lombard Street from east of Northeast Columbia Boulevard to east of Interstate 205 to improve wayfinding in the Columbia-Lombard Corridor.
This is the second reading. Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Wheeler?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. That brings us to our four-fifths agenda. If you could read the first of our two four-fifths agenda items.
And we also have that pulled, item 593.
Why don't we do that last?
Yes, I was just going to ask about that. Thank you.
We'll do it last.
Do it last. Okay. Suspension of the rules is 615-1, immediately cease cooperation between Portland Police Bureau and militarized federal forces.
Make sure, Udalee.
Thank you, Mayor. The items coming before us now were introduced on the four-fifths agenda, meaning that all my colleagues agreed to bring these two resolutions forward today on short notice. Thank you, colleagues, for your willingness to bring these forward quickly. Given the urgency there and the timeframe in which they were developed, there's no presentation today. I'm going to introduce the first resolution. We'll discuss it, and then we'll vote on it, and then we'll follow the same process for the second resolution. Here is a summary of the first resolution. This resolution resolves that all members of the Portland Police Bureau shall not provide, request, or willingly receive operational support, which includes but is not limited to embedding in a federal incident command center, sharing or receiving information from above defined federal forces, engaging in policing or crowd control measures with above federal forces, from any agent or employee representing or constituting part of deployment under executive order from the president, be they from Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Marshal Service, the Federal Protective Service, U.S. Customs and Border Protection, or any other service. I'm bringing this resolution forward today because we're in the midst of a global pandemic because in the midst of a global pandemic and an economic crisis, our city is now enduring a violent federal paramilitary occupation. While there are many elements of this situation beyond city council's control, we must take every action available to us to combat violations of both constitutional and human rights of our residents. As this resolution says, the Portland Police Bureau exists for the protection of Portland residents and is fully accountable to the elected city council as specified in Portland City Code 3.20.020. In short, this means that any coordination or collaboration between the P P B and the federal occupiers needs to end immediately. Thank you, colleagues, and I'll open the resolution up to council discussion.
Thank you, Commissioner Udalee. Commissioner Fritz, has her hand raised? Commissioner Fritz? Commissioner Fritz?
May I not worry? Thank you for bringing the resolution. Thank you, all of the colleagues, for collaborating on this. I'd like to move as a friendly amendment to add the final bit further resolved that this resolution is binding city policy.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Fritz, a second from Commissioner Udalee. Carla, please call the roll on the amendment.
Hardesty?
Aye.
Udalee?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Wheeler?
The amendment's adopted. Commissioner Hardesty?
Thank you. Let me just say thank you very much, Commissioner Udalee, for working on this resolution and bringing it to us today. It is really clear that we, as a council, must take a strong stand against Portland Police Bureau collaborating and cooperating with this federal goon squad that has been sent to Portland to stymie people who are demanding changes in our policing efforts. It is, it's been absolutely appalling seeing what has happened in this city over the last week. It is appalling to find out that the Portland Police Association Union President continues to lie to the public on a daily basis about the lack of cooperation by Portland police personnel. And every night on the street in the city of Portland, it is the federal goons that start throwing the military-grade tear gas during a time of a pandemic, and it is Portland police officers that are continuing to abuse our community members on the street. And it just makes me crazy when I see people who are sworn to protect and serve continuing to lie to the public about their involvement. It is clear that the missionaries sent here by 45 were sent here to silence people who wanted to exercise their First Amendment's rights. It is clear, I read in the article yesterday, that this so-called Acting Director of Homeland Security actually targeted Portland because of us pulling out of the Joint Terrorism Task Force and because we did not provide aid at the detention center when ICE was arresting children and putting them in cages, and Portlanders stood up. If Portland does not stand up now, and if we, as a city council, don't hold our own police officers accountable for this egregious behavior, we will be, we will go down in history as having failed in our obligation to protect community members. I still have the question, why was Portland Police not protecting Portlanders when these federal goons came in and started attacking us, rather than joining the federal goons who were attacking peaceful protesters? I want to make sure it's on a record. There are no riots. There are not people tearing things up downtown Portland. The little acts of resistance should never be responded to with the excessive force we see every night on our street. We are failing miserably at protecting the people in the city of Portland, and though we didn't bring in the federal people, it is clear that Portland Police Association welcomed their involvement, as well as the Portland Police Bureau, and as well as the mayor, because I've heard the mayor say he also welcomed their involvement. This is not the city I want to live in. This is not a city that will accept intimidation by people who are paid by taxpayers. I want to make sure that we are absolutely clear, that I will make sure that any Portland police officer that I see participating in this activity that I can identify, and since none of them have name tags and none of them have numbers, that will be a little difficult to do. And they are hiding behind these federal goons and pretending that they are not abusing community members. Let me be clear. The opening came for 45 to send in this malicious squad because of the over-aggressive actions of Portland Police. We cannot put the blame totally on this federal secret police force. The blame should rest entirely on Portland Police Bureau and their lack of de-escalation skills, their lack of ability to engage communities where they are, and their lack of desire to protect Portlanders who are under fire every single night. I am just appalled at the police bureau we have today, and hopefully I will be able to manage the police bureau so we have a better police bureau tomorrow. I'm done.
Could I clarify? Are we in closing statements, or are we still in discussion? Do people have questions? Commissioner Udalee, discussion?
Discussion, yeah. Mayor, can I speak?
Yeah, Commissioner Udalee, you have the floor.
I'm trying to get in the habit of lowering my hand as soon as I'm acknowledged. There we go. I want to take this opportunity to counter the narrative being driven by the president and some media about our city being under siege from protesters, being on fire or torn apart, and I want to thank the many, many community members all over the city posting on social media to counter that narrative. I'm going to read a report from a reliable source of what happened last night. "At least 2,000 protesters were out last night." This is in downtown Portland, near the federal building in the Justice Center. "They were peaceful. It was a block party and a way for the community to unite around these issues. With little provocation, the feds came out shooting and flashbringing all around the area with the sole intent of scaring everyone into leaving." And I want to emphasize, even the most violent nights, the vast majority of protesters were peaceful protesters. "The tear gas affected 90% of the people there. When people returned about an hour later, the feds came out again. This time, they shot munitions and so much tear gas directly into the park, hitting people who were sitting, relaxing, eating, cooking. These people were no threat, and there were lots of injuries. A national, this person personally saw members of the national press bleeding from their injuries and local press thrown to the ground. The medics had a line near the park of people needing emergency medical care, and this is all for post protesting."
Thank you, Commissioner Udalee. Commissioner Hardesty, do you have your hand raised again?
I failed to put it down.
No worries. Any further discussion on this item? Carla, is there any public testimony on this item?
The way we register for testimony, Mayor, people do not have time to sign up.
No, I know that, but you just never know. I feel obliged to ask, sorry. Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
I hope that this resolution sends a very strong message to the community that we will not tolerate police abuse, whether it's from federal goons sent in by 45 or our own local police force. It is unacceptable that we are, that they are providing assistance to this federal secret police force, which is why I made it clear and created a directive that my fire bureau will in no way participate- bureau will in no way participate in any police action until we are assured that the police actually are working for the benefit of the community. Um, thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily. You know how it makes me crazy when we do last-minute stuff, um, but this is absolutely vital, that the city council send a strong message that these federal goons do not speak for us, and we absolutely reject the notion that the city is under siege. The city is under siege by paramilitary, private police force and our own police force not respecting the rights of community members to peacefully assemble and demand change from their government. I'm happy to vote aye.
Chloe, Chloe, you're muted.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to take a moment to focus on the gravity of our current situation. Not only is the Trump administration violating the constitutional rights of Portlanders, but they are also attempting to use Portland as a proving ground for fascism, and they plan to invade cities across the country, cities that are political targets of the president. This resolution serves as a statement of our opposition to their presence in our city, a direction to our own police bureau, a template for policies that other cities could advance, and a national call to action. I'd like to thank my policy team, Hannah Holloway, Andreas Oswald, Jamie Duhamel, and my Chief of Staff, Marshall Winkle, for their work moving this forward so quickly. Thank you also to Noah Siegel, P-BOT's Director of Public Affairs, who consulted on this resolution. And of course, thank you to my colleagues on council for their support and your policy teams who made it possible to get this item ready, um, for today. Before I make my vote, I want to make something very clear. I stand in solidarity with protesters defending black lives, demanding racial justice, and the transformation of our justice system. But whether you agree with the protesters or not, if you believe in the Constitution of the United States, you must oppose the actions of this president and the violent suppression of individuals exercising their constitutional rights. I vote aye.
Fritz?
The person in charge of our country and of federal law enforcement has shown utter contempt for human life for the past three and a half long years that he's been in office. We've seen him order babies removed from nursing mothers and children put in cages at the border. We've seen him disrespecting the families of fallen soldiers and murdered civilians. We've seen him encourage white supremacists and hate mongers. We've seen him failing to take lifesaving actions to stem the COVID pandemic, disregarding medical advice and endangering communities with rallies and pressure to reopen. We should not be surprised that he is fueling upheaval in Portland by sending in federal officers, knowing that the city council has no authority to control or expel them. And I disagree with my colleague, Commissioner Hardisty. I believe he would have done it regardless. He needs something to, um, point to, to rally his base. It's hard to know what to say about people who encourage others to hate that won't further add to giving them the attention that they crave. It's even worse when those perpetrating violence against Portlanders and further inciting unrest are federal officers sent by the person in charge of our country, a person who often acts more like a petulant child than the president. Sending in federal officers to an already volatile situation seems calculated to magnify protests, and indeed it has done. The actions of federal officers are irresponsible and reprehensible, and the courage of demonstrators is awesome. Portlanders must unite against hate now more than ever. We must be smarter than the hate mongers. We reject white supremacy. We believe black lives matter and that peaceful demonstrations are necessary to support the movement. People who commit violent acts are not welcome here, whichever side of the confrontation line they occupy during the demonstrations. Those responsible must be brought to justice, whether they wear a badge or not. The council is united in opposing the federal invasion. We are all engaged, some on the front lines, others in discussions on finding solutions. There will be further actions by the council to, uh, to address the challenges that we all face. And in the meantime, we must work to be united and, and to find those solutions together. I appreciate the leadership of each one of my colleagues who are, um, care so much about our city and about justice being done. Aye.
Wheeler?
I appreciate this fourth item being brought forward. Commissioner Yu Daily, thank you for taking the lead on that and steering this along. Uh, I don't agree with everything my colleagues have said, but I have been deeply disturbed by reports that members of the press have been targeted by law enforcement, including city officers. In my opinion, such targeting violates fundamental legal protections afforded by our Constitution. Access to accurate information from reporters on the ground is a critical element of social change, and media must be able to do their job without the fear of interference from law enforcement. In the middle of June, following such reports, I directed the police bureau not to target members of the press. Today, I stand with my council colleagues in affirming again that city employees must adhere to our direction in the law and never target law-abiding members of the press. I also want to say this, I agree, uh, with the thrust of this, our, uh, community is under attack. Members of the community are being violently assaulted by unaccountable paramilitary voice forces deployed by President Trump. These violent troops are under no obligation whatsoever to adhere to our values, our laws, our policies, or even the terms of the U.S. Department of Justice Settlement Agreement. They were not invited, they are not welcome, they are not properly trained, and they refuse to leave. Therefore, I have no reservations about directing the Portland Police Bureau to continue to reject any or all requests for support from these federal interlopers. What's happening on our streets is not only an assault on Portland values, but on American norms. This is not the way we do things in our country. I've joined mayors from progressive cities around the country, calling on the administration to immediately remove these soldiers, and calling on the Senate and the House leaders to immediately investigate what looks very much like constitutional violations towards Americans. And I will use every legal option in my power to expel these troops from our city and make our streets safe again. I've directed City Attorney Tracy Reeve to explore and pursue every possible legal remedy to stop this intervention and to protect our community from the horrors the president is unleashing against its own people. And I will direct Chief Lavell to issue an order consistent with this resolution to his bureau effective immediately. Again, Commissioner Yu Daily, thank you for your leadership on both of these. I am pleased to vote aye. The forfeit's item is adopted. Next forfeit's item, please, Carla.
615-2, affirm the rights of members of the press and legal observers covering the protest against police brutality.
Commissioner Yu Daily?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, uh, we'll follow the same process with this resolution. I'll introduce it, it'll be open for discussion, and then we'll take a vote. This resolution resolves that the city of Portland condemns any intentional targeting of the press and legal observers who are otherwise engaging in lawful conduct and have the right to document police conduct during the protests under the court's July 16 stipulated preliminary injunction, and affirm, affirms that local law enforcement officers are prevented from arresting or using physical force against members of the press and legal observers. I'll open the resolution up to council discussion now. And if there's no discussion, we'll just move on to the vote?
Commissioner Hardisty has her end up. Commissioner Hardisty?
Uh, thank you. I'll just, uh, say what I have to say during the vote.
Carla, is there any public testimony on this item? I'm, I'm guessing the answer is no.
Correct, Mayor, no one was registered.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Hardisty?
Um, thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily, again, for this second resolution. I was shocked when I talked to, uh, Chief Lavell and found out that he lacked the knowledge that media was a First Amendment right to be able to record and, uh, report on government's actions. He did not believe that media, uh, had the right to stand and record and document police activity, and he said, when the police give an order, everybody is supposed to follow that order, media or not. I reminded him that we have a first, uh, we have a constitution, and we have a First Amendment right that protects, uh, reporters, and requires them, not just protects them, but requires them to report on government action. Um, thank you, Commissioner Yu Daily, because I could not get it through his head, and even with the federal judge putting a moratorium on moving, um, removing, uh, media personnel from these actions, I absolutely know that Portland does not believe that people have rights to, uh, uh, to, to actually record what police are doing. This was before the federal goons showed up. And so, again, though the federal goons has exacerbated a very tense situation, the fact that the chief does not know that the media has a right to record their actions makes this resolution vital. Um, it is absolutely critical, and I am thrilled, Commissioner Yu Daily, that you have bought this, uh, for the vote of this council. The fact that I couldn't tell him and convince him that the media has this right, uh, the federal courts couldn't tell our police department that, uh, that the media has this right, it is vital that the city council speaks loudly and clearly, um, that Portland Police is required to actually follow the Constitution as well. I wholeheartedly vote aye.
Hardisty, Yu Daily?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Hardisty. That is concerning. I think, uh, clarity on the constitutional rights of protesters may be, uh, training we need to add to other required training for the bureau. And I just want to really appreciate my colleagues' willingness to bring these items forward today. We often spend weeks, months, even years developing, um, policy, and it typically goes through many rounds and iterations, and amendments are brought. Um, but this, these are urgent issues that are unfolding on our streets every night, and we needed to address them as quickly as possible. So I am deeply grateful, um, for your input and your, your willingness to help me move them forward. The violence perpetrated against members of the media and legal observers by the Portland Police Bureau and by federal occupiers is completely unacceptable. Freedom of the press is a fundamental constitutional right and a tenet of our society. The press helps hold government accountable for its actions, and the lack of government accountability for police violence is what has led millions of protesters around the globe to take to the streets. We unequivocally need local press, independent journalists, and legal observers to document the actions of the P P B and federal occupiers. Without their commitment to reporting the facts, we wouldn't have accurate documentation of law enforcement assaulting Portlanders, targeting members of the press, and violating their constitutional rights. I want to thank every member of the press and our legal observers who are risking their safety every night to report on this national uprising for justice, for black lives, for transformative changes to law enforcement, and now the federal occupation of our city. You should not have to risk your safety to do your job. Your government should protect your constitutional rights, and I am hopeful that the action we take today will make you safer on our streets. I look forward to the P P B's strict adherence to this resolution. To all Portlanders, please consider supporting our local media outlets, all of whom have been hard hit during the COVID-19 crisis. They need our support, and we clearly need them. Once again, I want to thank my policy team, and this time I need to add my Communications Director, Margot Week, uh, who was instrumental in this moment, uh, and for all of the work to move this forward. And thank you again to my colleagues on council for your support and to your talented staff. I vote aye.
Fritz?
So, Constitution is a complicated document, that's why we have a, uh, an Oregon Supreme Court and a U.S. Supreme Court. I was really glad to hear the mayor say, under the previous, um, resolution, that he has directed the city, our city attorney, to pursue all legal means to, um, oppose what's, what's going on. Um, there is debate, which is why we, why there was the temporary restraining order on, uh, what the media has the right to do and whatnot. Um, there is, there are some who suggest that when an area is closed, the media does not have the right to remain. So, I believe, these are complicated issues. They seem, they may seem, um, clear, as clear as daylight, um, on the face of it, and when you dig into them, there's more to be considered. And so, I'm pleased to, uh, support this resolution, and, um, also to work with my colleagues and the mayor, just to, uh, find our way to the solutions that are going to work for Portlanders. Aye.
Wheeler?
I gave my speech earlier, it covers both of these forfeits items. Um, it still holds true for this one. Proud to co-sponsor. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Resolution, I'm sorry, is adopted. Thank you. Now, we have one more item left, that is the one item, Carla, that was pulled off of the consent agenda. My recollection is that was 593, is that correct?
That's correct.
Very good. If you could read that, please.
Authorize a competitive solicitation for parking garage management services for the Smart Park garages for five years.
Commissioner Yu Daily?
Okay. This ordinance...
Who pulled this one, Carla?
Pardon?
Who pulled this one?
I did. Commissioner Hardisty pulled it.
This ordinance authorizes for parking garage management services for the Smart Park garages for five years. Uh, it authorizes the Chief Procurement Office, Officer, to facilitate the use of the competitive solicitation process in order to obtain the most responsible and responsive offer for providing parking garage management, management services for the Smart Park garages. And here to provide further information is Michael Jacobs, Smart Park General Manager.
Hi, actually, um, I'm, this is Chris Arms with the...
Chris Arms, welcome.
Hi, sorry, Michael is not, uh, in the office currently, so I am here to answer any questions that you may have. Um, as, uh, Commissioner Yu Daily said, this council action would allow us to advertise an RFP for a vendor to operate the garages. Our current, um, contract expires March 31st, and so we are in the process of drafting the RFP now, and we hope to advertise it in September and then have a selection in December, which would give us, uh, time to finalize any contract negotiations and have it in place by the time our current contract expires.
Um, I'm sure if the mayor was unmuted, he would allow me to ask the question right now. Um, so, Chris, I do have a couple of questions. Um, uh, my first question is, um, I have intimate knowledge of the history of the small park, uh, uh, Smart Park contracts. What's different based on COVID-19 and us knowing that parking revenues will be drastically reduced for a while to come? How will this contract be different than other ones in the past?
Um, well, our, we're looking at changing the technology in the garages. So, our current contract, um, with Central Parking is to provide operations, janitorial, and they provide a lot of services such as the pay stations. We are working to use the same machines that we have on-street in the garages that will allow us to maintain them in-house, um, with our current workforce. And we're working on implementing, uh, mobile payments, the same as we have on-street through Parking Kitty, so that the on-street and the off-street systems, uh, are the same. So, the, the services themselves will be slightly different, and that is, we're transitioning out of the current system and into this new system with this technology.
And where's this major contractor, um, where's their base?
I believe, uh, Central Parking is owned by SP Plus, which I believe is in Nashville, Tennessee.
I'm actually old enough to remember when this RFP used to be written for one particular company.
Yes.
And that was back, uh, in a, before the Vera Katz days. Uh, and I had this poll because I just wanted to make sure that as we are moving forward with this new contract, um, that it was a competitive process, that it hadn't reverted back to... And I had this pulled because I just wanted to make sure that as we are moving forward with this new contract, um, that it was a competitive process, that it hadn't reverted back to being written in a way that only one company would benefit from it. Um, that it would be something that would also, uh, prioritize, uh, companies owned by BIPOC community members. Uh, and so I appreciate, uh, the information that you have shared today. Clearly, we're only today providing authorization to go out and do an RFP. Um, but I just want you to know that this is something that I will be paying close attention to because it's really easy for these contracts to warp into a sense of entitlement for one individual, uh, company or organization. It took us a long time to decouple this from who thought they were entitled to this contract. So, um, I, so I, uh, I have no problem with supporting going out for an RFP, um, but I just want to make sure that as we are being thoughtful about the new world we will live in, uh, that we are making sure that we are prioritizing BIPOC communities and that we are being as, uh, deliberative as possible in reaching out to the most vendors possible. So I thank you, Chris, for your presentation. And thank you, Commissioner Yu-Da Lee, for, um, for understanding the need for me to put this on the public record, uh, because this is something that, uh, we cannot allow to continue to happen at the city of Portland, that, uh, that vendors think that they have a sense of entitlement to public dollars. Thank you so much. That is all my questions, Chris.
Okay.
Very good. Is there any public testimony on this item, Carla?
No one would have registered.
Please call the roll.
Hardesty?
Uh, again, I am very grateful that transportation is really thinking through what's going to be different as we come out of this pandemic. We know people will be driving a lot less. We know we'll have a lot less parking revenues for a long time to come. And hopefully this contract will reflect a new, uh, vision about where we are moving. I vote aye.
Yu-Da Lee?
You're muted. Commissioner Yu-Da Lee, you're muted.
Thank you, Chris. I vote aye.
Fritz?
So Commissioner Hardesty, I'm smiling because I'd actually, I would just think that maybe a lot of people in tr- in Transportation Bureau are smiling. Every time this contract has come, and the 12 years I've been here, has been hugely controversial, and, uh, indeed, the parking garage wars. Um, probably the first one, um, was, was the, uh, pivotal time. But I think there's absolutely, certainly while everybody who's there now and has been for the last 10 years are, um, managing the program, there'll be no danger of making it a, a single bidder, um, because we all know that this is, um, an important contract. Um, I, I still, well, I did, when I was, uh, occasionally driving to City Hall, I missed having the attendants, um, saying goodbye to me and hello to me, um, that with the automation, uh, probably in the age of COVID, that's, that's not a bad thing, that they are not in contact with a lot of people, but I want to thank them for their service and their friendliness and their kindness. Um, so, uh, thank you, Commissioner Yu-Da Lee, and thank you to the transportation staff. I would have to say the long-suffering transportation staff in this particular instance. Aye.
Wheeler?
Thank you, Commissioner Yu-Da Lee. Thanks to the Transportation Bureau. I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted, and we are adjourned until 2:00 P.M.